Good afternoon. I welcome us to our meeting on February the 18th. No, no, February the 11th. 11th, I'm getting ahead of myself. Anyone addressing the City Council is asked to fill out a blue card and leave it at the podium for recording purposes. We'll start with roll call.
Trina Caplan-Gomez. Estrada.
Present.
Gonzalez.
Present.
Hernandez. Hurst.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Hopefully, all of you were able to look at the information items presented. Also, the reports of disbursements, miscellaneous documents report. And also, there were several written reports by councilmember regarding actions taken at their regional commission board meetings. There was a report by Aurelio, Councilman Aurelio, Councilwoman Trina, a second one by Councilman Aurelio, and then one also by Councilman Hurst. We don't have any new employees to present today, but we will be starting with reports to council, no action required. The first is the state of Metro presentation by Alex Clifford, CEO, and he has 10 minutes to address us.
Mayor, councilmember, city manager, thank you for the opportunity annually to come before you and present the state of Metro. And it's always a great time for me to share with you the great things that are going on with Metro, particularly focused on the Watsonville community. I always like to start off with a couple of quick stats for you. This year's operating budget for Metro is $52 million. That's up from the previous year primarily because of SB 1 and the new revenues that flow out of that. We employ about 300 people. We have 98 fixed routes and commuter buses that run, or 98 fixed route buses that run on commuter and fixed route service, and we have 41 paratransit vehicles operating across the county. Our service area is the county, the entire population of 264,000. We provide about 5 million annual trips, both combined on the commuter and the fixed route service, and about 72,000 trips on our paratransit service. Always interesting to point out, and kind of a growing number year over year, about 60, 60%, of our annual ridership is the UCSC students and faculty and Cabrillo College. So, it's always a fun and exciting number. Bringing it home here to Watsonville, about 64% of the people boarding our transit service at the Watsonville Transit Center are your residents of your community, and about 85% of the people riding on buses within your community are your Watsonville residents. So, always interesting to point out. Didn't used to have that stat, but we finally did a community survey, a survey recently of our transit riders, and it produced some useful information like that. Also, as I spoke about last year, finally, we're getting close to launching our automatic vehicle location, which will allow our customers to use their smartphone and access our service through that application and determine when their bus is arriving. So, that's exciting. It's being installed now. I couldn't say that last year, but now I can say it. It's being installed now, and we should have that up and operational within the next few months. Also, as I talked about last year, we have to replace a lot of our buses. 50% of our fleet is our buses beyond their useful life. I'm still running 1998 buses. They should have been retired long ago. And we're doing better than we were last year when I was here, but we still have about 50% to replace. We're going to make big progress this year on that. We have some funding to buy a number of buses, so I'll be excited to report that to you next year. But in that vein, if you will, we did purchase through a combination of funding sources, four Proterra zero emission fully electric buses. That's exciting for us. That's our first electric buses coming to this county, and it's been a little bit of a moving target to get the delivery of these for a variety of reasons, but they are now scheduled to arrive in June of this year. And we hope to, well, we hope we plan to put one and possibly two of those buses right here in Watsonville on a brand-new route that we're going to be designing. We call it today the Watsonville Circulator. So, that'll be exciting for you. Our staff continues to, so, so we haven't designed that route yet. So, what our staff is doing is meeting with residents regarding their suggestions on where a circulator route might go. And a circulator route is somewhat of a little bit of a wandering route. It doesn't necessarily run on a major thoroughfare. It might run on it, in part, but it kind of circulates through neighborhoods in some of its types of designs. We hope to launch that in fall, and you might say, "Well, if your bus is getting here in June, why are you waiting till fall to launch it?" Well, it is a new electric bus. It's going to take us some time to run it through the gauntlet and make sure that we can accept that bus, that it meets all of our standards and bid criteria. And then, on top of that, we have to train all of our 154 bus operators on the bus before we can put it in service. So, that's why there's a gap in time between when the bus arrives and when we actually put it into service. Now, our staff has been outreach to your community at farmer's markets, the local senior center, and meetings in our transit center, and they're going to continue to do that through February to receive feedback from the community on that. And then, we're hoping to present in spring to you what the outcome is of those meetings and where we think that circulator route is going to work. We also look forward to continuing our annual participation in your Independence Parade. As you know, we always bring a bus, and it's fun to do that, and a number of employees. And then, you may or may not know, but every year when the county fair occurs, we extend one of our bus lines to provide service all the way to the fairgrounds so that your residents and the residents of this county can take our bus service there. If you've driven by the Watsonville Transit Center, a project near and dear to Aurelio's heart is the mural. Since he came aboard, he gave that a real kick in the backside, and it's moving forward. We got the renovation of the original mural completed, and now are well underway on the new mural, which is happening on another wall. If you haven't seen it, you ought to see it. It's really awesome looking. It's not quite done yet, but we're getting there. Weather permitting, we hope to have that done in March. We're also coordinating with Paul and the community for an unveiling, and of course, Aurelio, to have a unveiling ceremony when that is ready to show the world this beautiful mural that has been done. You're probably aware of the Unified Corridor, and you know Metro has an interest in that. One of the concepts is a possible bus in that Unified Corridor. And so, our team continues to work on that, and solicit, there's been a number of public meetings in which the RTC and Metro jointly have been soliciting feedback from the community about what they think should happen in that right-of-way. As a matter of fact, last week, there were focus groups involving 20 to 25 Watsonville community members participating in that discussion. Also, last week, the team met with the Planning and Public Works Departments from the various cities, including Watsonville. And then, tomorrow night, from 6:00 to 7:30, there'll be a public outreach meeting conducted at the Watsonville Library Community Room. So, there'll be further discussion later this year with the RTC, the commission itself, culminating in a preferred alternative projected to be January of 2021. So, that's what that timeline looks like at this point. And then, in closing, the RTC and Metro continue to advance the environmental clearance on the bus-on-shoulder concept. That will be exciting for all of us, because as you know, your residents that are headed, say, to Santa Cruz to possibly work in the morning, having to deal with all of that gridlock, will benefit by a bus that could run in the shoulder and pass up those cars that are standing still. Won't that be great for your residents? Won't that be wonderful for our ridership? So, we look forward to that. We hope to launch that first phase. It's a multi-phase project, but if everything goes well with the environmental and the funding, we hope to launch that within about a couple of years. So, it's getting closer. It was a dream five years ago when I talked about it here. It's getting closer. It's about a couple of years away. So, Madam Chair, council?
Thank you so much for your presentation. Are there any questions, comments? Yes.
Yeah, I have a question. Actually, well, it's not a question. I'd just like to, so you to give more information to the community on the app.
Yeah, I wish I could give you more other than, right now, I can't tell you where to get it because we're not ready to launch it. They are going to do some beta testing here pretty shortly, but we'll, we'll do a big splash through the marketing department when we're ready to get that word out. But, you know, in a nutshell, it's, it's not new science or technology. We're really late to the game. It took us a while to find funding and to commit to that, but it's going to happen, and it'll be really cool because you can look at that app and you can see, "I want to board the bus at this particular stop, and the bus is running 10 minutes late, so why should I rush out to that bus stop if the bus is going to be 10 minutes late? I'll just wait 10 minutes more and then go out there."
So, they can be, it'll be real-time, in other words.
Real-time.
So, that'd be good.
Thank you. Really fun stuff.
Thank you for your report. It was a good report.
Mr. Clifford, thanks for being here. Can you tell us what maybe some of the biggest challenges you face are in this next coming year?
Yeah. Well, it's, it's twofold, and maybe they're both sort of connected. For us in public transit, it's always funding. You know, the costs of goods and, and services and the cost of providing the service are constantly growing at a more rapid rate than the revenues are. And so, they're, they're constantly moving apart. Now, that, that got bridged a little bit with SB 1, but we're going to start next year moving apart again. The gap's going to grow. And it challenges us to continue to figure out more and more how to run the system more efficiently. It constantly challenges us, and we have to be vigilant. The, the other one for us is sort of a combination of what I talked about with an aging fleet. It's very difficult to run a fleet that is so old. It has a lot of maintenance costs associated with it, and our service becomes at times less dependable than we would like it to be because those buses might break down out there. So, finding the money to replace the fleet, and then, at the same time, trying to commit to electric. And electric is new for us, right? It's new across the state. It's new across this nation. Electric buses, electric cars have been around, but this is very different when it comes to electric buses. You can only put so many batteries on a bus, and you can only get so much range out of it, and that's a challenge for us. I need buses that'll go 300 miles in a day, when the buses that are produced today go about 120 to 150 miles in between charges. That's a challenge. How do I fix that? Do I start buying two buses for one bus replacement? Replace a CNG bus with two electrics? That's a very costly proposal. And then, on top of that, if I buy a compressed natural gas bus, what we call a CNG bus, that cost of that bus is about $750,000 compared to over $1 million for each electric bus. So, we're challenged by probably those two or three things in the coming days in figuring out good solutions and making good decisions.
Thank you, sir.
Any other, yes, Ari?
Yeah, I was looking, listening to your report, and you talked about the paratransit.
Paratransit, yes.
Yeah, paratransit. And you said there's approximately 72,000 trips?
Yes.
On paratransit? Could you, has it grown over the years? I mean, is this the most it's been? Has it expanded its program?
It's been a little bit flattish, what I would describe it as, and that's probably a good thing for us. We think it's a really good service, but it's a service that cost us about $70, $70 a trip, whereas somebody riding on the bus cost us about $10 a trip. So, anytime we can encourage and market to the senior and disabled community to ride the bus, that's really the best alternative. But not everybody can, and that's what paratransit is there to do, to help bridge that gap.
Well, it's a great service.
It's wonderful.
I got to tell you, because for seniors, especially here in Watsonville, as well as disabled folks, and I have friends in all those areas, just getting on a regular bus wouldn't need, you'd have to have an assistant person come out and help you get on the bus. So, they do a great job.
They really do.
So, I'm surprised it hasn't expanded.
Well, you-
As we all become seniors, maybe that'll happen.
What they call the silver tsunami moving through.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, I hope Mr. Clifford will stick around for our next presentation about age-friendly communities.
Yeah.
Unless there's a bus you have to catch.
I'll wait for that presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments or questions?
I, I had a question. I'm really excited about the two electric buses that are coming to Watsonville. I'm wondering, are you going to have to have charging stations here, and if so, where will they be?
A really good question, and that's what we're trying to figure out right now. So, part of the delay, there's always a story behind everything. Part of the delay in getting the electric buses is that I made a decision a year or so ago that the bus we were gonna buy, which is a bus that's been out on the market for a few years, wouldn't be the right choice because Proterra produced a longer-range bus, what they call a 660. And we don't know how many miles, how much range that will, that bus will have until it gets here. They market all kinds of things to you, but I don't believe any of that because none of that is proven to be true in other buses put out on the market today. So, until it gets here, I won't know for sure. Ideally, what I'd like to do is charge those two buses all night and run them all day on the circulator, and then have them go back and charge all night and repeat tomorrow. But as a backup, we're also submitting a grant application to potentially put a fast-charging facility at the Watsonville Transit Center so that if we need to, we can have that bus roll through in between trips, maybe get 10 or 15 minutes of charge, and go back out on the circulator again, and then come back and do the same again. So, we're trying to create a backup plan because this technology is so challenging for us, and we don't know exactly what it's going to do yet until it gets here.
Well, we really, really appreciate your report. It was a thorough report, and appreciate that you focused on the Watsonville area and meeting our needs. So, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the annual invite, and I'll be sure and see you again next year.
Yeah.
If not sooner.
We are now going to our consent agenda. All items appearing on the consent agenda are recommended actions which are considered to be routine and will be acted upon as one consensus motion. Any items removed will be considered immediately after the consensus motion, and the mayor will allow public input for, prior to the approval of consent agenda. So, at this time, is there anybody in the public that would like to address us on the consent agenda? Seeing none, then I will entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Is there a second to that? A second by Ari. Any thoughts, discussions on any of the items? Hearing none, then roll call.
Estrada.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Hurst.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes. Okay, we will be moving on to new business, considering of support for the World Health Organization Age, Family, Cities, and Communities Program and approval of cities enrollment into the American Association of Retired Persons, AARP-friendly communities. And this was requested by Parks and Recs. So, you're on.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Garcia, and members of the City Council. My name is Nick Kalabaki, but I'm the Parks and Community Services Director for the City of Watsonville. I'm here this afternoon with our friend and partner, Clay Kempf, the Executive Director of the Seniors Council and the Area Agency on Aging for Santa Cruz and San Benito Counties. The recommendation with this report tonight is twofold. First is, we're asking the council to adopt a resolution approving the city's enrollment into the AARP age-friendly communities, and secondly, to participate in a county-wide age-friendly communities initiative led by the Seniors Council and Area Agency on Aging. So, I'm going to do a real brief intro on age-friendly communities and then pass the, pass the floor to Clay, who's going to delve a little bit further, but just wanted to give a brief introduction on kind of the concept and why we're talking about this in the first place. So, as was just mentioned, we know that our population in Watsonville and throughout California and the United States is aging. And through the City Council, through its increased investment in older adults, most recently by appropriating funds to support the direct operation of the senior center, you know, we, we know that that's putting resources into making sure that our community is age-friendly is important to both the council and to the community. Research and lived experience has shown that in order for adults to age healthily and to age in place, we need to look at our community beyond the four walls of the senior center itself. And, you know, I think it's, it's pretty widely accepted that health and well-being are determined not only by our genes and personal characteristics, but also by our physical and social environments in which we live our lives as well. And thus, our overall environment has a significant impact on, on our ability to, to age healthily. So, the World Health Organization has identified eight domains of livability that affect the well-being of older adults. You'll see what those eight domains are here on, on this slide. And with that said, I'm going to pass the mic to Clay, who's going to talk a little bit more about what these eight domains mean and what this all means kind of in the context of a larger initiative that the Seniors Council is leading across the county.
Well, first of all, thanks to Nick and Matt for engaging in conversations about this and inviting me here today. And in addition to that, a number of councilmembers have met with me personally and with the senior community to learn more about this project. So, you know, really can't say enough about how great your participation is in looking at this potential project, and especially in the investment that you've made in seniors in general and in the Watsonville Senior Center specifically. So, that's been huge. As Nick is saying, there's eight domains of livability as defined by World Health Organization and AARP, and I'll talk a little bit more about each of these, but one thing about the project to be aware of is that each city, or the county, or whoever's involved with this does not have to use all eight of these. Or, we could use nine or 10, or 12, or 15, et cetera. Hopefully, we're not going to go too far in that direction, but there is flexibility in the way the, the plan's designed. So, looking at these, I think I went the wrong way here. You know, all of you, I'm not going to read the A to you, but I will talk a little bit more about each one. And the eight domains are really just to make the community more participatory or more friendly to older adults. But what's especially interesting about this is AARP has discovered that if you make a community age-friendly, it's also a livable community, and some studies they did showed that if you wanted to create a livable community for millennials, the eight domains that you would need to create are virtually identical to the age-friendly domain. So, we're kind of getting an overall win here. And one thing I like to say, and others like to say, is aging is not a destination. It's process. So, these domains of livability, or there's these domains of age-friendly are all part of that process. And of course, hopefully, we all benefit from it. So, you guys can read the slides, but I will hit what the highlights are just as we go through this. First one is outdoor spaces in buildings, and I think is, this is part of having an engaged and healthy and vibrant older adult community. If we're getting outdoors, we're socializing, and we're also promoting our health. Domain two, this should be dear to Alex's heart, is transportation. And I think this is pretty obvious that a community can have as many services or opportunities as you can imagine, but if somebody can't get there, they don't exist. So, transportation is just a real key element to this. And related to that, studies have shown that when a person ages and they can't drive anymore, that's as traumatic as losing a spouse is. So, we really want to make sure in this process that we have alternatives to driving that's available to the community and help, help to mitigate that a bit. Housing, I think this is a no-brainer. Unfortunately, housing for all communities in California is just a huge challenge. So, if you actually look at the age-friendly tool that AARP has on their website, a remarkable piece of that is they will give a numerical score for each of these domains, and that score can be as broad as you want to see it. You could look at the entire state. You could look at a county. You could look at a city, or even your own neighborhood. So, in total, California cities, and I'm sure Watsonville, well, I've actually looked at all the cities in the county, and we score very poorly in housing. But, you know, that's a state phenomenon, and it's even, it's exacerbated in, in Santa Cruz County or any coastal community. Domain four is social participation, and I think one thing that's often overlooked is the aging of the population is often considered a crisis or a problem, and I say that a lot myself, but it's also a tremendous opportunity because you have older adults who have a vast amount of lifetime experience and skills- of lifetime experience and skills that are suddenly going to have a lot more free time. So how can we leverage that to volunteerism or social participation that benefits all of us and those older adults as well? Domain five, respect and social inclusion. Again, we all want that throughout all our ages. Civic participation and employment is real similar to that, but I think the employment part of it is a special aspect. And again, you know, finding a vibrant economy and appropriate jobs for all ages is something that all of us share in terms of our goals. Communication and information kind of has two sides to it. One of, which surprises me every time we do a needs assessment, and we're actually in the process of doing a senior needs assessment right now, is the number of people who, one of their top needs is finding out where to get help where they need help. So we want to design a system that not only includes communication from seniors but to seniors and make that a really interactive aspect of where we live. And then number eight is maybe one of the three most obvious to me, and that's community and health services. So these are the eight domains that AARP's age-friendly network puts forth. We will, in our discussion, I will be proposing that we consider a ninth domain, which is emergency response and disaster preparedness. That's been the most popular domain to add on to, so we can steal from some other cities, work in that area, and it just seems kind of like an obvious one that we should tackle. I would actually argue it might be the first one we want to tackle because, you know, if you make that the last thing we tackle, well, then we're just inviting a disaster to happen that we're not prepared for. So I think we covered the things in this slide. Nick did some of it, and some of it is parts that I brought forward. The countywide initiative, we recognize that it's always best to share projects, and for us, as the Area Agency on Aging, we kind of have an automatic leadership role in planning for senior services. So just from a selfish point of view, our agency doesn't want to do five of these. We think it's cost-effective for everybody to do one with the four cities and county partnering. And the other benefit that I think we get from that is we can all steal from each other. You know, there's going to be some things that Watsonville does better than anyplace else in the county. There's going to be things that Watsonville doesn't do as well as Scotts Valley or Santa Cruz or whoever. So I think as we develop this, that cross-pollination of ideals and ideas is going to really help each of us. And the goal of having a countywide plan is that under each domain, we might have half a dozen things that are going to be accomplished in the county. But each city or the county will be able to say, we're only doing these three. The other three, they're just not a goal for us, or it's beyond our scope. So the goal is to have this master plan with all work being done countywide, but each city retaining control over what they do and what they don't do. So given a domain, let's say there's six goals that everyone comes up with. Watsonville might be doing four of them, Scotts Valley might be doing two of them, Capitola might be doing all six. That'll be up to all of you to decide. That won't be our decision, we'll just be facilitating the process. We're also designating the Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council as the age-friendly advisory council as well. They'll be the entity that looks over the details that are being recommended and decide what to put forth to each individual city. The reason we chose that is twofold. One is that there's a representative from every city and two from the county on that advisory council. There's also San Benito County representation. San Benito County wants to engage in this too, but we're going to do Santa Cruz County first and San Benito County second, and they can learn from our mistakes and our best practices. So Councilmember Hurst is a member of that advisory council, and Councilmember Parker is the alternate. So we have that engagement. And again, you know, none of us need an extra meeting to go to, so this is one way that we will eliminate that second meeting. We will fold it into that group. And actually, it's now a new standing item on that advisory council. Every month, we'll have updates on this project. We have listed here a five-step process for what needs to happen to make this take place. We officially, an elected body needs to make a commitment to becoming age-friendly, and that's what we're here to do tonight. We need to organize the stakeholders. By that, the way that we're perceiving this to move forward is to have a work group that tackles the domains and tackles the process and comes up with the actual plan. And we want to do each domain one at a time for a couple reasons. One is it breaks down what's supposed to be a three- to five-year process into something more realistic and allows us to see progress reports going forth. And I think that's the most important part because each time we do a domain, that will come back to the city council for adoption, and that way, we'll have ongoing progress. And I think that increases engagement of the community, engagement of the council, and engagement of our organization, frankly, to see that we're building on success, not waiting and waiting for years to see a finished product. So organizing the stakeholders is part of that. Conducting assessments to identify local needs. I mentioned that we are doing a countywide, or two-county, actually, senior needs assessment right now, so that'll give us some baseline data. But in all likelihood, we'll be doing a number of public workshops to find out from the seniors themselves about their ideas. The project work group will facilitate this. They'll identify what domains we want to do in each order and whether we want to shrink some or add a ninth or, you know, whatever the proposal is. And then they develop that action plan, as I'm describing. One thing we want in the action plan is to hear what each city is already doing. And I think one thing that all of us are guilty of, city councils, nonprofit organizations, et cetera, is we forget to celebrate our successes. You know, all of us are so busy that it's like, what's the next big challenge that we have to take on, and we focus on that. But in this plan, each city can highlight the successes, the things they're already working on. So if part of what an age-friendly community's transportation plan is having a new local route to provide rides to people, we can say that in a public setting and not forget that that was done or is in the process. Deliverables are kind of self-explanatory, and I think we kind of covered these. It's really a tool where we develop these plans, and then usually the last couple of years of the project is to just track our success in it. Here's the timeline. I've kind of described this, that, you know, we will facilitate the meeting of staff and participants on each domain on a singular basis. And the reason why I think that's important to highlight is who is at the table is going to depend on the domain. Transportation is probably the perfect example. If we're working on a transportation plan around the county, we absolutely want Santa Cruz Metro to be part of that work group. We want the Santa Cruz Regional Transportation Commission to be part of it. And we might want someone from Public Works to address sidewalks or streets and roads. But there's no reason for those members to be part of all eight domains. Healthcare, for example, is not, you know, something that any of those entities that the commissioner, Metro, would really need to roll up their sleeves and work on. So we're looking at having this kind of evolving work group, I guess. So it would be great to have one key person from each city appointed. It might be Nick, whoever all of you select. But that each work group then would evolve depending on what the subject is, so we can make sure we have the subject experts at the table driving this. Does that make sense? And then, like I said before, we want to make sure that when we finish a domain, it doesn't just sit on a shelf, that we bring it back and roll it out in the community so we continue that engagement and, you know, we can see ongoing process or progress. Funding, we're going to provide staff to augment this, and probably the majority of the facilitation costs will be our own. We do want to seek some matching money from each jurisdiction. We're doing that based on a penny per senior per week in your community, so we think that's a pretty small investment. We do think it's important that participating cities have some skin in the game, just to show that you're invested a little bit and that you will show up and act on the process. Right now, Santa Cruz County is on board. I actually did a similar presentation there this morning. They had previously decided to become an age-friendly city or an age-friendly county and join in this process. And Watsonville, I'm proud to say, if you support the staff proposal, you'll be the first city in our project to join force. And as a longtime resident of this area, it makes me really proud that Watsonville's going to lead the way and beat the other cities going forward. Are you on now?
I'm on now. Okay, so just in terms of financial impact, Clay talked about a little over $6,000 annual cost to the City of Watsonville for our portion of the coordinator, who will work for the Seniors Council to help coordinate this countywide project. So as this project gets launched in this current fiscal year, we will be able to absorb our city's proportionate costs in the existing older adult services budget. But moving beyond this fiscal year into next fiscal year and further down the timeline, we would just include an additional allocation for that cost in future year budgets as we go through the regular budget approval process. So that kind of wraps up our presentation. Again, the recommendation is twofold. It's first, adopt a resolution to approve the city's enrollment into age-friendly communities, and then, second, to support the senior councils and Area Agency on Aging's countywide age-friendly communities initiative. And with that said, we would be happy to take any questions you might have.
So are there any clarifying or technical questions from any of the council members? Ollie?
Yeah, just for clarification, you said a little over $6,000? Is that just for the remaining of this year, or is that for fiscal year?
That's, as I understand, the estimated annual cost to the City of Watsonville for our portion of the coordinator to help manage the project.
Because this is going to be, I mean, one cent per senior? And that'll be based off a census meeting, or how are we going to get that number?
The way I got the initial number, granted, it's an estimate, so it might be $100 off or less than that. But we looked at Department of Finance census numbers. They do break it down by county each year. They don't break it down by city in terms of age. So I looked at total numbers of 60-plus in the county, we do have that figure, and then extrapolated how many, what that percentage is countywide, and then multiplied that by the population of Watsonville or Capitola or whoever. So we've got a plus and minus factor, and there's a small plus and minus for a penny a senior. Hopefully, that process is satisfactory.
And I ask this because we're going to be allotting this into the future. I mean, to have a fixed number that we can work with versus falling short or overexceeding, I mean, something that we know that we can talk to our community and say that, because we say, you know, $6,000, little over, they're going to say, what are you talking about, little over? You know? I support this, but I'm just asking those questions for clarification.
Yeah, those are really good questions. And, you know, will we view that figure if we get better information? But the number that's in here now is the commitment for the first year. We anticipate coming back with updated numbers each year.
Other clarifying or technical questions? Ollie?
Yes, I'm glad Clay's here today, and I'm glad this issue's on our agenda. You know, growing old's not always a picnic. You know, it's kind of a wonderful reward that you get if you can live long enough, but there are issues, and I'm glad we're acknowledging some of those issues with these eight domains of transportation, housing, outdoor spaces, social inclusion, and communication, information. And so, you know, one of the big barriers, I think, is communication. How can we engage seniors in a more age-friendly manner? Because not everybody wants to be bothered, you know? Not everybody wants to receive a survey or a telephone call or read a thick report to put them to sleep because they're already ready to take a nap. So how can we reach out to seniors and inform them and engage with them? And they've got a lot on their plate about health in particular, because this is kind of the time in your life where you're experiencing some challenges. And Medicare doesn't pay for dental and vision, and so those are areas that seniors are often in need about. And of course, they're in need of transportation support as well, as we talked about. So, and I also really liked you bringing up the fact that we need to prepare seniors for emergencies. Because when we had some of those horrendous floods, you could almost picture a worst-case scenario where we had to evacuate seniors in rubber boats and in their pajamas in the middle of the night. And that wasn't going to be a very, a very good scenario unless we really have it planned out very well. And so engaging seniors, that's what I want to hear more about and how we can, you know, do a better job of communicating and reaching out and sharing these ideas that the World Health Organization and the AARP have and the services available through the Seniors Council and the AAA. What do you say about that?
Nick's looking at me, so I'll take a shot at it. But that's, you know, that's a great question, and it's a big challenge. And I think there's some traditional methods that we can approach. Usually, the best thing to do is go to seniors themselves. Don't wait for them to come to you, you know, and I think that's true of any population. So we do have some hubs of activities. Part of it is the Senior Center, which is becoming more of a hub with the city's takeover. And then just think, you know, common sense, where do seniors live? Senior housing complexes and mobile homes are a great place to go. And who interacts with seniors? Well, we have a wealth of senior service providers, and on projects like this, they have always been great partners in reaching out to the community and getting that engagement. That doesn't cover everybody, but that's part of it. We might do, you know, some public hearings. And one thing that we're having some discussions about is the Santa Cruz Museum of Art and History just did a multi-month presentation or display about loneliness and isolation of older adults. And I see, you know, all of you are nodding your head, so you've seen it. And what was kind of remarkable in that project was they did a tremendous job of getting seniors engaged in the design. I went to virtually all those meetings. So that was a wealth of older adults that were trying to design something meaningful that would resonate with them. And I was also impressed about how many people from South County were part of that group. So the museum is actually looking at next things for all those seniors to do or next things for them to do with the Loneliness and Isolation Planning Committee. So we've discussed, you know, this maybe being the next great engagement process for all those people that embrace that so much. So, you know, that's not comprehensive, but those are a few ideas where we can start.
Ari?
Thanks, Clay, for being here, and I'm super happy to see Nick's next year, and we're actually going to be voting on this. This is wonderful. You mentioned a needs assessment that's going out, and what are the vehicles that are driving that needs? Are we doing it, mailing it? Could you further clarify?
We're kind of doing it in most of the ways that I just described. There is an online version of it. Historically, we do this survey every four years, and if we go back eight years, we had almost no responses online. Four years ago, we had 15%, 10% to 15%, and this year, I don't know the exact number right now, but it's kind of doubled. So it's nice to see older adults responding in greater numbers online. It tells us a lot about how to reach out to people, too. So, and that's one way. Again, we've worked closely with senior service providers to have them help distribute it to their clientele. And then libraries, the paper survey is done, we're actually not collecting any more of them. But we tried to distribute it widely where seniors might show up, senior centers. We have sent it to activity directors or other contacts at senior living facilities, and I've tried to get some out to people that are in assisted living as well. So right now, I think there's about 850 responses. The person that's doing the analysis for us is Dr. Pam Arnsberger, who- The person that's doing the analysis for us is Dr. Pam Arnsberger, who has extensive experience working with all kinds of research documents and studies. And we're lucky enough, she's currently our board president. So we're getting a doctorate-level support for free, which otherwise, we couldn't come close to affording. Her feedback was for the size of our community. If we get 500 responses, it's statistically valid. So we're way over that. And if the council would like, when that survey's done, we'd be happy to have, she and I could come here and make a presentation about the findings. You know, you guys have busy schedules, so if that doesn't fit, we'll at least distribute paper copies of the report. That's a few months away, but most of the data's been collected.
So you've said that most of the data's collected. So you're not actively engaging on the online one still or is that still open?
The online one is still open. The beauty of that and part of why we extended it is we don't have to re-crunch, re-enter all the data. So that's an easy add-on.
What's the, how do we get there?
And a week ago was on the first page that pops up. It might have been pushed back a little bit by now.
Okay. That's great. I'm really excited to see this. And I second what Councilman Hurst said about adding on that emergency response because in my district, we are nothing but a huge amount of seniors on the edge of an emergency. So it would be great to be able to have that. And the last time we did have it where we had mandatory evacuation from that area, you know, people on oxygen, they don't, they don't, they don't drive, so they can't leave themselves. They have pets. There's a tremendous amount of stress involved just in thinking about leaving your home. So I'm really excited about this. And Clay, I'm really, really excited you brought this to us.
Ceci Sko?
Thank you both for the presentation. Are there other cities in the world, and I'm sorry if I missed this, that are currently considered age-friendly cities? And what are some of the outcomes that they've achieved thus far?
That's a great question. There's more and more cities joining this project across California. Think, do you know the number currently?
I don't.
Yeah, I don't either. It's probably around, my guess would be about 20. Los Angeles County took it on, which is a huge undertaking. They did it in partnership with the city. Marin County also engaged in it. And there were two or three projects that were city-focused in Marin. And as those progressed, the county said, let's pull together a county project. Berkeley has done it. San Jose has done it, or Santa Clara, Santa Clara County. So we do have some models that we're looking for or looking at. What AARP does, that's a really nice feature, is they hold regional roundtables of cities that have worked on this. So, you know, we can see who the partners are and again, you know, share ideas and best practices.
And then, thank you for that. And then the other thing I wanted to thank you is you'd mentioned that, you know, the growing millennials, right? And I sort of see that, you know, in Watsonville especially, I feel like we're, it's becoming quite polarized because of age. We have, I think, either a really young community and then we have that silver tsunami coming, you know? And so I sort of wonder the strategies for like intergenerational activities or, you know, take advantage of the senior center a little bit? Because, you know, I feel like we live in a country where it's, you know, one side calling the other side boomers and then the other side is calling the other, you know, millennial snowflakes or whatever. And, you know, there's no real sense of like common ground, you know? So what are, are there strategies to just engage more a little bit?
I love that idea. And Nick and I have actually talked about ways to do that at the senior center. So a lot of those ideas are in the formative stage. This is really up to the work group and task force to design those sorts of details. I have lots of ideas about how we can do that, but just a couple to highlight on that. If you go to a nursing home, good nursing homes will often have children visit the nursing homes on a regular basis. And that's just an incredible experience for both the residents of the home and for the kids as well. So I think that's one of the things we can promote. We also operate a foster-grandparent program. And that matches up senior, older adults as volunteers who work in classrooms directly with two to four seniors in the classroom that have some challenges regarding reading or math or behavior. So that's an example, I think, of a, an intergenerational program that we already have in place that, again, none of us talk about it enough because it's, you know, it's there, so it's not that big new project. And I think these age-friendly city plans are a place where we can highlight the things we're already doing well in addition to developing some new projects.
Thank you. That's, those are all my questions, Mayor.
Okay. My question has to do with the domain of outdoor spaces. As mayor, I've been working with Nick in terms of organizing the seniors to take a walk about a block and a half to the Par Valley Arts Gallery. But other than that outdoor experience, I don't know that we're doing anything else. And so I wondered if you had ideas in terms of how we could address the issue, the domain of outdoor spaces?
Part of it is just accessible design, you know, making sure there aren't two, three, four flights of stairs to get to someplace. But if we look around the city, I think there's some great opportunities. You know, the city has done a great job of developing a trail center into their trails throughout the wetlands. And we see lots of people using that already. But what better way to expand outdoor experiences than using that or just highlighting that it even exists? Because, you know, you don't see that in Scotts Valley or in Capitola or, you know, Santa Cruz has West Cliff Drive, but they really don't have that trail system that all of you have. So I think that's a place where we can highlight what's already done in this city. And then through parks or through other community partners, create more programs for exploring nature through, you know, through what the city has to offer. That's just off the top of my head. Nick probably has some more ideas about how we can.
Well, actually, in my conversation with Nick, originally, I was going to have them do the trail walk on the Strew Slough. But after, I walk it regularly. And the last time I walked, I thought, maybe this is too far, too, too big of an area, you know? And so that's why I went to Plan B, just walk a block and a half to the Par Valley Gallery. But yeah, we can look more into utilizing those trails because they're beautiful trails. Yeah, they are. Okay. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address this agenda item? Okay. Antonio? Former mayor?
It's great that you're moving forward for the seniors. And I think it's very important that we continue to provide this coordination that we have. And I think it had a lot of things that we need in our city of Watsonville. And whatever we can do for our seniors, because it's increasing, it's important that we continue to develop the plan that, and the coordination between all the agencies. Because I can see, you know, transportation, the metro, which is, they need a different infrastructure for our seniors. At one time, we talked to the, you know, the Santa Cruz County Department of Education, the county, with the superintendent. We can be able to use some of their buses, especially buses. Because in reality, they're cutting a lot of the routes for our seniors, you know, to go in a different, you know, mostly for, you know, medical appointments and other stuff. So I think we need to coordinate a lot of those services. And the other idea that, that you mentioned, Mr. Estrada here, is that intergenerational is very important. When I was in the city council, we brought that idea because, to put it in Rolling Hills Middle School. And you remember, Rebecca, we have an opportunity building there, but they stared down that that was the idea to convert into an intergenerational, because we don't have anything in District Three, any community center there. So that was the idea that we brought. And maybe in the future, we can think about working with the district and come up with that idea and to put in that together. Because they have the land and they have the facilities there. So maybe that's an idea that we can be able to bring up with the, with the district. Coming out with a community center that is intergenerational. And you have, we have a lot of seniors that walk around the track there. We have a lot of people that work and, you know, using that facility in Rolling Hills. So that's an idea that I can bring that up, so you can think about it. So maybe in the future, we'll get more funding and be able to start the planning in the future for our senior, because it's increasing, both the youth as well as our seniors. So all I can say, I support. And hopefully, we can be able to start with the funding. It's a small amount of funding, but I think, you know, as we get together and start planning with everybody involved, I think we can come up with a beautiful senior center as well as communicating. And also, hopefully, we can be able to, I don't know what's going on with the new director of senior centers. I don't know if they have hired anybody yet. No, not yet. So hopefully, whoever is the director of senior here in Watsonville, we can be able to start talking and be able to get the right person to develop that. So I thank you and go forward.
Thank you, Antonio. Anybody else in the audience? Seeing that, I bring it back to the council and I'll entertain a motion. Lo?
Mayor, I want to thank former Mayor Rivas here because he's always been an advocate for the seniors of the entire community and not just District Three. He was able to advise many, many seniors and myself as well on issues that are really important and help bring seniors together. And so I would move the resolution supporting the World Health Organization's Age Friendly Cities and the community program and approving the city's enrollment in the American Association of Retired Persons, AARP, age-friendly cities, communities.
I'd like to second that. Okay, seconded by Ari. Any further discussion on the motion?
Just a quick intergenerational comment. I think it's a fabulous thing to do. The one thing we do in elementary schools between, our school's sixth grade and kindergarten, and at times, there was issues. And I can think of five billion things to do with, you know, teenagers that need jobs and seniors who need things done, you know? And especially in this city, we keep the kids busy forever. And I think along that, seniors, you know, collect comic books, too, just so you know. They read them.
Billy Bear?
You know, Paco mentioned something about the millennials and the boomers. I did attend a workshop at the League of Cities that they discussed things about what people want to see in their cities. And they matched the findings with millennials and with boomers. And they realized that those two had, were pretty compatible in what they want to see in their cities. So it's things like things to do in their downtown, a walkable downtown, park spaces. So they very much, even though they're different generations, they mirrored what they want to see in their cities. So I know that this, the ARP, the six, what are they called? The six or seven branches or?
Domains.
Domains, yeah. I know that the transportation portion of it really talks a lot about, you know, making bike and pedestrian-friendly cities. And so I'm excited about this as well.
I'm very excited, just like my colleague just mentioned. I guess just my question is, what would be from you, the next step? Or when would we hear back from you on any progress made on the project?
The next step would be, we would work with staff to submit an official, you know, we're joining proclamation essentially. So that's the immediate next step. And then after that, we will start, depending on when other cities come on board. I was actually talking with some other staff about this today. But I think the next step is to form the work group and assume that all four cities are going to be on board and start having that discussion of which domains do we want to tackle and in which order and what's our process for choosing existing practices and new practices, new plans.
Well, you know, I don't want this to sort of fall off the radar and, I mean, when can we hear, like, a report back with substantial steps taken? Even if it's a year, a couple of months into the future, I mean, when can you come back to let us know how things are going?
We can come back, you know, as the, as we hit key milestones. The other thing is that you can rely on your own council members as members of the AAA Advisory Council. They're going to be hearing monthly progress reports. So I think when something significant happens, you know, we'll rely on those appointees, on Councilmember Hurst and Parker, to say, I'll share this with the city council or this is significant and you should come back to the city council and report on the progress.
Thank you.
Aurelio?
Yeah, just for closing. Thank you for the presentation. It was a good presentation. Thank you, Antonio, for returning back from Cabo. I appreciate it. I always see him in Cabo. So I thank you very much for that and support of our seniors. On these domains and just what you just mentioned briefly of waiting for the other cities to come aboard, I know the city of Watsonville is leading the way. I wouldn't like to sit, see this sit on a shelf, waiting for the other cities to jump aboard. I'd really like to see us start tackling some of these domains and showing the way as we are doing already and being a leadership in this adventure. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll have roll call.
Estrada?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hurst?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Okay. Motion moved. Moving on, there were no items removed from the consent agenda. So this ends this part of our meeting and we will be turning at 6:30 PM. Nick?
I'd like to bring this meeting to order today on February the 11th. Welcome, everybody. The first thing on the agenda is roll call.
Captain Gomez.
Estrada.
Present.
Gonzalez.
Present.
Hernandez.
Present.
First.
Here.
Parker.
Present.
Garcia.
Here.
Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance, and I don't see any young people out there, so I'll lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just in case there's some Spanish speaking people. Para usar los aparatos de traducir en español obtenga un aparato de la mesa junto a la caseta de traducir. Aprendalo y use el canal cero cual en el cuello, pongas en el cuello frente hacia afuera. Si no puede oír, revise que el aparato esté encendido y sin obstrucciones. Solo funciona dentro de la cámara del concilio, concilio, concilio. Y por favor regresalo antes de salir. We will begin with the presentations and communications, and we'd like to present a proclamation to Nordic Naturals. They're not here, but we want to do the presentation anyway. Something new we're going to be starting is that every month, one of the council members will be recommending a proclamation to an individual, a business, a group, an activity in their district. And this month Lowell decided to present a proclamation, so Lowell?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I think it's a great idea that we rotate these proclamations because there's so many worthy individuals as well as organizations and businesses out there. And this month that I chose Nordic Naturals, and Nordic has been with us for quite some time and is world-renowned for their good work. So let me read the proclamation. Nordic Naturals is a company that produces fish oil supplements sold in dozens of countries, founded by the CEO, Jore Oppheim, in 1995. And whereas Nordic Naturals believes in a positive partnership and sustainable business practices and supports the local and global organizations with the same vision, and when looking to expand, Jore shifted his attention to Watsonville and regarding its centrality in the juncture of major highways allowing easy access for ground transportation and an ideal setting. This location, which serves as its headquarters, was the first commercial building in the county to be LEED Gold certified for innovation in energy and environmental design. And all of their administrative, marketing, and sales staff, research, education, quality assurance, materials, and distributions are housed at this site. And whereas Nordic Natural believes in corporate social responsibility and recognizes the influence it has on its employees, customers, and the community and the environment. And they are dedicated to making a difference by being conscientious with how they source their raw materials and process their oils, all of which are Friend of the Sea certified, a guarantee that fish used come from healthy fisheries. And whereas, they also contribute to the community by using local caterers, printers, florists, and production company.
Now therefore, I, Rebecca J. Garcia, Mayor of the City of Watsonville in the State of California, on behalf of the City Council hereby congratulate Nordic Naturals for their commitment to delivering the safest nutrients essential to health and sustainable best practices to minimize its impact on the environment. Congratulations to Nordic Naturals.
I'll be sure to. I'll be sure to.
Okay, moving on, we have oral communications from the public. If you wish to address the council on items not on the agenda, please come forward, and you have three minutes. Don't all come all at once.
And if I could ask you to give these to all the electeds, if you would please. Well, good evening, Mayor, City Council, and appointed. And I'm here, oh, Steve Trujillo, Parro Village, District Seven. I'm here as a representative of the Advisory Council for our beloved Watsonville YMCA. We are starting tonight the annual fundraising drive for the YMCA. And I wanted to give you both numerical evidence, proof, of what the YMCA does for our community and also a couple of personal vignettes about why I am connected, very much so, to the YMCA but in a place far distant from here and very long ago. First, numerically. Eight hundred and nine, you know that, eight hundred and nine children will not be on the drowned list. They learn to swim at the YMCA, and they will not drown. They will be able to, if they fall in a pool of water or freshwater, saltwater, they will be able to swim to safety. It is unfortunately the second-leading cause of accidental death among children over eighteen. That is probably the most wonderful lifesaving effect that the YMCA has in our community, but I want you to look at the others as well. And as you can see, the YMCA provides all kinds of services for all age groups. For example, two hundred and one students improved their literacy thanks to the academic support and the after-school program, and I know that Ari knows about that because it's at Bradley. And eight hundred and eighty-nine kids were safe, active, and learning thanks to the Y break and day camps. And a thousand seven kids stayed active, developed skills, and gained confidence through Y youth sports. And none of them had to go through a junk food drive-through restaurant to get any of those skills. How about that, council? And I want also to bring to you the fact that the YMCA provides support for our elders. I happen to know a number of my neighbors on Bronte Avenue in Parro Village who make very good use of the YMCA, not just for getting in the pool and taking senior exercise classes, but just for an outing that is social. And we have to remember that many of our seniors are, they don't get out very often. Now, I want to also, a personal note. The Torrance YMCA in Los Angeles County taught me how to swim when I was thirteen, in nineteen sixty-six. I was a very skinny kid with a lot of acne pimples. The Y not only taught me how to swim, but it also got rid of my acne pimples thanks to the pool water. I became a more self-confident adolescent, and I can't thank them enough. I also want to point out I have a scarf from the YMCA record. That's what I earned at sixteen-year-old, as a sixteen-year-old walking the John Muir Trail. Thank you, YMCA. It's a wonderful organization. If you want to join, they are in on Sutton Street, and the director is Robert W. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Richard Arnold, Mayor, City Council people. I was a little rough on you, taking your victory laps for your recent elections, and congratulations for having served. My main concern is the fact that the information and the power and the authority that's been given to you by the citizens is being moved to a COG, a council of government. In fact, what's happening is a parallel government is being set up. It is really unknown to both of your teachers, the local newspapers, most of them were bought by the Bill Gates Foundation and handed over to Globalist. Your Paharonian, by the way, is also owned by the Good Times. The Good Times came out of Chicago by James Weinstein, who was a communist and was proud of driving around the convicted atomic spies when he was younger. We're run by a political machine under Leon Panetta. It's very powerful. I see that Bernie people are getting knocked out a second time, being obviously stolen elections, they can't handle, you know, four hundred thousand votes. And we have voter harvesting here, too, which is very bad. We also have the elections of people that represent the county of Santa Cruz, and the people here that represented, were representatives at Ambag voted without, I think, consulting any one of you, as that they should appoint Bruce McPherson to be the representative for the Santa Cruz County. Bruce McPherson received tens of thousands of dollars from a communist Chinese triple-agent spy who's on the front page of U.S. News and World Report. He is also part of the Leon Panetta machine called California Forward. The co-founder is Lenny Mandanka, who advocates getting rid of eighty percent of the local governments, that means you, that's why all this power is being transferred. This happens to be, we hear about Diane Feinstein and her cabbie that turned out to be a communist spy. It wasn't her cabbie, it was the head of her office. This is him in nineteen seventy. He's been, she's been working with the communists ever since that particular time. You have two monuments to a Chinese communist spy on the courthouse steps that the board of supervisors won't touch. Some of the candidates looking to replace the president of supervisors never heard of ICLI, which is a front for the United Nations and the World Bank, and you know you have contracts with them, and so does ICLI. I insist that you ask your appointees to Ambag to have community TV photographs and make that, those meetings available. They are literally done in secret. I was the only one person from nine cities and three counties there at one of the last meetings, and that's outrageous, that's done in secret, and the violation of the Logan Act because they do have representatives from both the UN and the World Bank. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
The one chart there is the Council on Foreign Relations that shows their power in the banking, oil, media, the rest of it. There's hundreds of them. You now have a book, The History of the Council on Foreign Relations, before you. I hope you underline it and use it. Thank you.
Thank you for your generosity.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, staff, and future engineers. In celebration of National Engineers Week, which is next week, we will be hosting the Seventeenth Annual Egg Drop Competition. As many of you know, this is an excellent way to join the extravaganza for Engineers Week registration, and the festivities will begin on Wednesday at 3:00 PM. There are rules on our website as to what is allowed and not allowed in your egg contraption that you can participate in tossing off the sixth floor and see if it survives. Yes, there's been many, many participants from the Environmental Science Workshop, from mess-up programs, and from students throughout the schools. So, it is open to everyone, and if you need help and/or ideas in constructing your egg container, please feel free to join the Environmental Science Workshop staff and children, and they can assist you. So, we'll look for you next Wednesday, the nineteenth, three o'clock, right here in the alley. Thank you.
It's always lots of fun. Any other people like to address the council?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. I just wanted to give you a little bit of a levy update. On January twenty-eighth, Zone Seven met in Santa Cruz. Aurelio joined us at that meeting. And we, what the main focus of that group is trying to find a way to reduce the cost that will happen for the senior community or whoever ends up being taxed to pay for the levy. The levy is going to have federal money, it's going to have state money, and it has to have local money. But every, every year, annually, there's a Zone Seven fee on the tax bill, and they're trying to find a way if they can also apply that to the community that's going to end up paying. So, that's a good thing, I thought you should know that. Let's see. We also want to thank Senator Manning and Assembly Members Reavis and Stone. They've all been very involved at the state level to help us with the levy. And then, on February seventh, there was a meeting in Hollister, that's a different group. That's the Parro River Watershed Flood Prevention Board. And we have people there from Santa Clara, Santa Cruz, Monterey, and San Benito County. We all meet and talk about what we're going to do, and there was a report saying that the audit for that group was great, so we were happy to hear that. And then last night, there was another meeting, and Council Member Gonzalez and Hernandez, both that joined us next door. That was another Zone Seven meeting, and it talked about CEQA and asking people to come out and see what is going, what is the plan? How high are the walls going to be? What's going to happen to the levy? And there's still more input that's going to happen. Again, we're still trying to continue grant funding. Zone Seven's been really instrumental in that, and your staff, Jackie McLeod and Steve Palmisano, they're on top of it. We're really lucky that they are doing all they're doing. And one thing that was announced last night is that they awarded one point eight million to the engineering and design group. So, we're on our way. This is happening, and I just wanted you to know, there's a lot of things happening with the levy. So, thanks for your support, and here we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Nancy, do you have the website so folks can give input?
I don't have it here.
With you, the link?
I didn't, I didn't write it down, but I'm sure we can get it.
Oh, we can, we can have that posted.
I think it's important to post it because there were people there last night, as you know, but a lot of people want more information, and there are people that weren't there, so.
Yeah.
And they do need to give input on what is going to happen. How high are these walls going to be? It really depends on the width of how much, how wide the river's going to be, how tall the walls will be. So, if there's a narrow channel, then the walls are going to be higher. And they're talking about one hundred feet and up to four hundred feet wide in some areas, and they're going to have to purchase a lot of land. There's a lot going on. But I think we should be able to get the website.
Yeah, we can make the link available on our website and share it on social media as well, try to collect as much input as we can.
Yeah, great.
Appreciate that.
Where did you, where'd you put it at, right here? Parro Project, Santa Cruz? Hang on a minute. Oh, here's the website. WW Parro, uh, that's WWParroFloodProtection.org. And they're accepting inputs till March third. So, it's really important that our community go out and give input on this, because it's the first stages, like Nancy was saying, and the data word, it is, it is a project now, after the Army Corps Engineers gave a sign-off on it, and so there is going to be funding for it, and so it's a matter, it's a matter of process and trying to get the community involved, especially those that are affected by it. So, you really, really need to get on this. Thank you. Thank you, Nancy.
Yeah, I think there's also going to be a celebration at some point of the, of the other group, not Zone Seven, but there's going to be a celebration of the signing of that letter, and I'll let you know more details as it comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the council?
Hello, Mayor, councilors, staff. Thanks, Nancy, for that info, that was pretty, pretty important. And thanks for the website link, I'm gonna look into that. My name's Alan Flores, I'm a resident of District Three, along with my wife and two kids. I'm also a graduate of the first-ever Watsonville Academy, which was a great program. I learned a lot about staying involved in your community, and that's why I'm here today. I'm also cannabis license holder in our city, and wanted to take a couple moments to talk about our equity program. After much consideration and discussion, you guys drafted an order and it's called the Chapter Forty-Nine Cannabis Equity Program. There's really important stuff in here, and you guys spent a lot of time massaging it and making it work. At the last planning commission meeting, it seems this chapter had been forgotten about. After some discussion, the commissioners liked the idea of equity, and they wanted to do something about it, but didn't have access to this document. It was a very busy meeting, there was a lot of out-of-towners. I just wanted to just remind you guys not to forget about the people that are here working every day, just like myself, who would be an equity program candidate. If you look at the commissioners' recommendations, you'll see they voted unanimously to include and prioritize equity in, for locals. Please keep that in mind as we move forward. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, you guys can get my email available.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? Seeing none, I bring it back to the council for their reports and a reminder that we now only have two minutes, so you'll either talk faster or talk less. Would anybody like to go first? Felipe? Go ahead.
I'll turn on my thing, though, because even my two minutes, I'm gonna try to turn it up here. So, welcome, everybody, back to the council meeting. Over the, over the last two, three weeks, I attended several things that I wanted to talk to folks about. One of them was the SABAS School Parent Leadership Meeting. They had called me because there was a traffic versus pedestrian collision that happened right there on Walker, and a lot of the parents were concerned. And so, there was a presentation about that, but some of the parents are, they are working on a petition for safer streets to school, and that'll be coming up soon from the parents there. But it was a really good conversation with the parents. They knew that, they realized that we already actually had a plan for, for many of the things that they were addressing, but we do gotta touch up on some things that we haven't talked about. The other thing is, I want to thank, we had a great legislative update with all our elected officials. I wanted to thank staff for putting it together, and thank everyone that participated. I attended the Filipino Family History Project. It was a presentation called Watsonville in the Heart that was here in the community and talked about Filipino immigrants and their contributions in the community, and it was more of an oral history, that was really great to hear, you know, different perspectives. And I want to thank the library and Carol and everybody at the library and Roy Recio that put it together. It was great work. I attended the Par Valley Chamber of, Chamber of Commerce Dinner, and that was a great event. I want to congratulate, congratulate Barbie Gomez on winning and all the other award winners for, for that dinner. I attended the Methodist Church presentation of Measure Y, and it was, it was well-attended, and I want to thank everyone that participated in that. If anyone's interested, on the nineteenth, we are gonna be having one at the Elks Lodge as well. I want to congratulate all the city workers who received awards at the Seventy-First Annual Employee Awards. And the last thing, I wanted to invite everybody to the kickoff or the opportunity to learn and participate with Measure, the Measure Y Campaign. That is on February, Thursday, February twentieth at four thirty at the Pizza Slice Project. So, if you want to know about it or you want to volunteer, be sure to be there.
Thank you. Aurelio, would you like to go next?
Sure, if I can have the four minutes, I appreciate it.
No, you cannot. You will have two minutes.
Wait a minute, that's censorship. You gave him more than four minutes. Anyways, I'm gonna proceed because my time is clicking away. I wanted to bring out the alternative analysis for the regional transportation, that it's a really critical, important part that as a community we go out and participate. It's gonna be happening tomorrow at six o'clock at the public library. And this is a, this part is to evaluate the public transit investment options that provide an integrated. an integrated transit network for Santa Cruz County, utilizing all or part of the length of the rail right-of-way as a dedicated transit facility. Inter-county and inter-regional connections to Monterey, Gilroy, San Francisco, Bay Area, and beyond will be considered. So you can see how important this, this meeting is tomorrow for us as a community. So I hope that I can see a lot of folks out there participating and giving their input, from the young folks like Carlos to the seniors like Steve. And on that, since you ate up my time, I will, which one do you want me to tell you? Excited over the second one?
The 1.8 million, nobody mentioned it.
The 1.8 million? Yeah, Nancy did.
Oh.
On the flood zone. Yeah, she, she, she imported that. And that's, again, the flood zone plan is up, and it's important. So if you can attend these meetings and give input on the website, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
I got 40 seconds left.
I wanted to just congratulate PVPSA, their Executive Director, Erika Padilla Chavez, the staff, the board, for an amazing grand opening of their new building over on East Lake. It was a great, a great event, a lot of community leaders were out there. And, you know, PVPSA is a real, a real asset to our community, and they do a lot of good work. So, the fact that they have a new place where families can come and receive the services that they need to succeed is, is really an amazing thing. I wanted to thank COPA for organizing a Measure Y meeting a week ago. It was, it was great to be able to sit with residents, with people that I think would typically not have the opportunity to talk to the Chief of Police, or a member of council or staff, and just listen to them, hear them out, hear what their concerns were, converse with them, talk to them, and find common ground. So that was an amazing event, and I'm hoping that's just the first of many moving forward. I had the opportunity to sub for the City Manager at Civics Day at Watsonville High. The kids were pretty shy, or I was boring, so I think they were shy. That must have been it. So, I had a great time, kudos to the, the high school for always having Civics Day, and teaching about the importance of being engaged and connected to your community. And then finally, I just wanted to thank Mr. Pedro Castillo from my district, who held a meeting greet lunch with the Chancellor of UCSC, with a lot of community alumni. And it's a great sort of sign that the Chancellor of the University of California, Santa Cruz, has been to Watsonville many, many times early in her tenure. So, we expect big things from her, and we expect a, a sort of a more solid bridge between Watsonville and UCSC. Thank you, Mayor.
Ari, would you like to go next?
Hi, I'm Ari Parker. I am a district representative from District 7. My last three weeks have been a little bit different than everybody else's. I was involved in a car crash about three and a half weeks ago, where a young man ran a stop sign. And I'm happy to say that my report on that crash is that nobody was permanently hurt. Neither he nor my mom, who's 97, or myself, my car, only three months old, a little bit of a problem. But during this last three months, I have lost some weight, because I didn't get to attend the Legislative Breakfast, and I didn't get to attend the Chamber of Commerce Dinner, which I really wanted to be at, and I didn't get to attend the Employee Annual Awards. But I am feeling better, and I'm able to be here tonight. And I wanted to thank Stephen for mentioning the Watsonville YMCA. We have my site manager at Bradley Elementary School, Raquel Pulido. She is one of your colleagues. And if it hadn't been for a city council meeting today, we would have all been there, Stephen, just so you know. But we definitely support that. And things are, you know, moving along over in District 7. I want to express my appreciation to our former councilwoman, Dr. Nancy Belisich, who continues to make impact in District 7 and in District 2, and all along the Paharo River Levy for all of Watsonville. We have new bike lanes that are working out well, but boy, I saw some bikers out there during the windy times that we just had a couple days ago, and some of them just stopped and got off their bike, because it's, it is a little bit crazy. But I was happy to see that our lanes are working out really well. People are driving more to the inside, even when there's no bicycles there. So, from District 7, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, to thank you, Mayor, for a great job at the Employees Awards Dinner. We had dozens and dozens scores of awardees, and you were on your feet for almost five hours passing out the, the awards. And so, thanks to the employees. I was also able to attend the UCSC's convocation, Martin Luther King Convocation, the 36th Annual, last night, where we had the, the annual Tony Hill Award was presented. It was presented to Jeffrey Dunn and George Al Jr., a couple of philanthropists and helpful folks in our community, as well as, hey, region and statewide. I've been having a lot of fun going door-to-door, and I'm sorry Mr. Arnold's left, because I was out there harvesting votes, as he might say. Well, it wasn't really harvesting votes, it was planting the seeds for votes, because there is an election coming up, and some of you may have received this, this notice in your mail. Well, there's something in there that you should get out and take a look at, and fill in the dots, and just mail it right back in, because it's really important to the city of Watsonville, very important to our community that we have excellent police, fire, and public safety, and parks and recreation opportunities. And I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As you can imagine, as Mayor, the amount of meetings and events I have to attend has increased tremendously, in addition to meeting with staff members and having conversations with them. Today alone, I had 82 emails that I'm going to have to respond to, hopefully. And so I'm just gonna share my two minutes to, two things. One is, as Francisco mentioned, the Watsonville High School had their Civics Date, and I was able to speak to four groups of students, 60 students in each group. And in my conversation with them, I posed a problem to them, and I said to them, of all the problems that we have in Watsonville, which are the problems you think that the city really needs to address? And interesting enough, they said that they identified housing, homelessness, plastic, and drug use amount, among youth, which is in fact issues that we on the city council are addressing. So I appreciate that we're on the same page with these high school students. Secondly, if you remember at our last meeting, on the agenda, we had an item on urgency moratorium to, I don't know if it was to prohibit or ban future drive-throughs. And it failed in a vote 5 to 2. And one of the arguments that was presented by those that voted against it was that the owners of the parcels that were going to be affected by this moratorium had not been involved in the development of the moratorium, and that was a great point. So I thought about it, and I thought, well, you know, I think maybe we need to reach out to them. So I asked the City Manager on behalf of the Mayor, and I will finish the sentence, on behalf of the Mayor, to send out a letter to all those owners and inform them that we had been studying the impact of drive-throughs on the community, and asking them for their thoughts and comments, and questions, and concerns. And what the City Manager has said to me is that in order for that to happen, I will need to make a formal request for an agenda item, that will then go to the Agenda Review Committee, and they will decide if in fact it will be an agenda item where we can go to the community, because the owners are part of our community, to get that information. So I will be making that request at the right time. So, completing that, we will move on to now Public Hearings, Ordinances, and Appeals. And the first is the 19-573, Consideration of Ordinance Introduction to Update Chapter 22 Taxi Caps of Title V, Public Welfare Morals and Conduct of Watsonville Municipal Code. And I'm not sure who is presenting this. Oh, there you are. Sorry.
Presenting this.
Okay, go ahead.
It's a real page-turner. All right, good evening. My name is Tom Sims, I'm the Assistant Chief of Police. Tonight, I brought before you, for your review and approval, the new taxi ordinance. As you may recall, last August, you approved a rate increase for the taxi industry. At that time, the city attorney and I explained that there was a new law that had come out, Assembly Bill 1069, requiring us to update our taxi ordinance. AB 1069 changed how our city regulates local taxi companies. As this law was coming out, the California State Association of Counties, along with the taxi industry, came together to create a model ordinance. We basically borrowed from that model to create what we have in front of you. As we discussed with the rate increase, the intent of AB 1069 was to allow taxi companies more freedom to compete with rideshare companies like Uber and Lyft, but also to strengthen our city's oversight of these companies and their drivers. One of the main changes to the ordinance includes the language "substantially located." This simply means that only the companies that are substantially located with the city are subject to the majority requirements of the ordinance. There are sections that address companies who are not substantially located within the city, but there are restrictions to what they're allowed to do. Another change is that taxi companies are now required to conduct driver alcohol and controlled substance checks. This requirement is aimed at making our community safer, and puts the onus of the driver compliance on the company. There's also a vehicle inspection requirement, which will ensure the companies maintain the fleet in a safe manner. There is no financial impact to the city, however, you will see that the fees are included in the recommendation, because they were associated to the rescinded ordinance, and need to be readopted in this new ordinance. So as an alternative, you may choose not to approve this ordinance, but the city would continue to be out of compliance with state law. So again, I recommend that council approves this updated taxi ordinance, so that we can come in compliance with state law changes. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Okay, I'll bring it to the council. Are there any technical clarifying questions? Oh, I have one. In terms of the check for alcohol and controlled substance, how often does that take place?
I recall it's a yearly requirement prior to obtaining their, their renewal for their driver's permit.
So it's just once a year, and not ongoing?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. If there's anybody from the audience that would like to address this, please come forward.
Yes, I would. Steve Traheal, Paharo Village. It's very encouraging, Assistant Chief Sims, that this is being adopted, and thank you for this. I'm very glad to hear that our taxi, but taxis in Watsonville are not Uber, because, you know, Uber is filled with sexual violence, and as a matter of fact, London got rid of them. We, in this community, I think, have a much better understanding of mutual respect for the driver and the passenger. I'm very encouraged to see that that's usually the case here, although I would encourage more than once a year, check for alcohol, because even taxi drivers occasionally might have a little, few too many before, not all of them, maybe one or two, maybe a little bit more than they should before they go on duty. Nonetheless, they have a good record. I support them. I think this should be passed, and I am very hopeful that the next time I need to get somewhere and don't have a car, that I'll be able to get ahold of a taxi here in Watsonville and get from point A to point B. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would anybody else like to address the council on this topic?
Here. I'd just like to add to Chief Sims' comments, that Chief Sims and I met with Mr. Camperood, who is the, I call him the largest taxi operator in the city, and he is agreeable with his ordinance. He thinks it's a reasonable regulation. And I would also add that he's very much interested in having this safe business, because it affects him. So he's, he's self-regulating in that respect, and his insurance companies are self-regulating in that respect. So it's a, the system works. I don't believe, Chief Sims can correct me, I don't believe there's been a problem in the past, and this is additional regulation on top of that, because I don't think we check the drivers every year until now.
That's correct. The two, I think, main points that our city attorney is commenting on is, one, the vehicle inspections, which obviously allow us to ensure that the vehicles are, are running in a safe manner, and the, the alcohol and drug testing, which is brand-new. So we're excited to have that as part of this ordinance as well.
Anybody else like to address the council? Okay, seeing that, I will now entertain a motion. Felipe?
I'll move the ordinance to, to update Chapter 22 and Title V of the municipal code.
A second.
Who did the second? Oh, okay, Aurelio. Any discussion, further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Estrada?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes. Okay, moving on to B 2049, Consideration of Acceptance of City of Watsonville Community Development User Fee Steady, January 2020, in Establishing and Adopting Fees, Rates, and Charges for the Community Development Department. We will be having a staff report to begin.
Cindy Surwin, Administrative Services Director, here with Suzie Miriam, Community Development Department Director. So we are presenting on a recently completed fee study, and we are asking you to approve a resolution approving fees for the Community Development Department to be effective May 5th of 2020. So, the Community Development Department right now is in the process of implementing a new permit system. And in the course of them implementing that system, we determined that the fee schedule that they currently had really needed to be looked at and updated. So, we engaged with a consultant, Will Dan Financial Services, who actually conducted a citywide fee study for the city about two years ago in 2017, to help us relook specifically at the fees for the Community Development Department. We wanted to update the fee schedule to make it match the way the department is currently operating, and to help match better with the capabilities of the system, the new system. So just some background, user fees are, they're a fee that we charge to members of the public and customers for providing a very specific service that really only benefits that person. Under California law, we cannot change, charge in excess of the cost of providing that service. We can only charge up to or under what it actually costs to provide that service. Anything above that would be considered a tax. So, to the extent that a user fee doesn't fully cover the cost of providing the services, the additional cost is covered by other funds in the city. Watsonville's case, that would be the general fund. Just for example, you know, one of the fees that, for example, would go through the Community Development Department is, say somebody needs a permit to redo their roof, right? It takes their staff time to process that permit, to process that request, and to send the inspector out and make sure that that roof was done correctly. So that's really a benefit, kind of just for that person. As we, if we don't have them pay the full cost of that service, their staff time is still getting paid, and so again, so the difference between the cost of providing the service and what the fee actually is charged would then have to be covered by the general fund. So again, we engaged Will Dan in a study, and we really looked at only the fees limited to the building department, fire-related construction, and planning fees. The primary goal was not to generate more cost recovery and to, to increase our revenue proportion, it was really to look at the fee schedule in terms of updating the fees, the units of measurement, and simplification. And in the course of doing that, we did look at cost recovery, but that wasn't the primary goal of the study. So Will Dan created a model which calculates the fully burden- So Will Dan created a model which calculates the fully burden rates. So that is taking staff time and calculating, including in that cost, overhead, staff, materials, and supplies, citywide overhead costs, to calculate, to create a rate per person of kind of a fully burden, what is the cost of that person, having that person provide this service. We then went through, Susie and I, with the staff that actually do this work and provide these services. We literally went through every single line item and every single fee and talked about how much time it takes on average to perform the service. And based on that, we plug that into the model, and what comes out is a maximum, the maximum amount you can charge. We then went through every charge again and decided to set the fee either at the maximum or, again, something less than that. Most of the time, it's pretty close to the max, and you'll see that in your report. There's a few cases, very small, where based on policy considerations, we may want to have it be less than full cost. For example, I think there was one, the one that's standing out is like gray water, because we want to encourage people to get permits for gray water systems. So we may keep that lower, acknowledging that it's going to be subsidized, but acknowledging that that also provides greater public benefit. So just some examples of what we were doing. Again, we were trying to clean up the fee schedule. So you can see in our old fee schedule, we had five different fees for absorption units. I don't even know what that is. But we had five different fees for absorption units of different size, and you can see three of them were actually wound up with the same charge, and then two were slightly above that. So we actually combined that, and we now, in our new fee schedule, we're just limiting that, we're now only doing two. Another example, we looked through, as you can see from your report, there's over 100 of these different fees, and so we looked at them across to make sure that we were being consistent in the way we were charging things. In the old schedule, you can see we had one that was a plan check and inspection, and then down below, we have a permit issuance, and then an inspection, and then a re-inspection, and they're all kind of of different amounts. So in the new schedule, we combined all of those and consolidated them into a plan check, an inspection, and a re-inspection, and a permit issuance fee, rather than having that service combined in some areas and separated in other areas and different amounts, depending on if it was electrical or mechanical. We really looked and wanted to be consistent. Another area where we made some updates was changing the units of measurement. So for example, in the old schedule, you can see that for rewiring, inspections for rewiring of residential buildings, it was charged like 10 cents per foot. And in talking to the inspectors, we realized that that's just sort of really unrealistic. It's more about the time that they're spending out there and an hourly kind of charge. So we updated this to actually be an hourly charge for an inspector to go out and look at the rewiring, more on an hourly basis than on a 10 cent per foot basis. So those are just some examples of the kind of cleanup and the kind of changes we were really trying to do to better match, like I said, our current practices, with also making sure that things would be transparent and easily understandable and calculated by the public when they're looking at the fee schedule and knowing how much their work is going to charge or cost. The biggest change that we actually made was in looking at new construction schedules. The current, the city currently has three different schedules based on different construction types, and what we did is we actually updated that to, one, we made sure that we were consistent with ICC occupancy rates, and we consolidated it down to only one schedule, not differentiated based on construction type, but really only based on square footage and on occupancy type. And from talking with our building inspector, that made sense to him in that the different construction types didn't really change all that much, how many times and how many inspections his staff has to go out there to do these inspections. And so again, for transparency and making it for the ease of the public, we decided to consolidate it down to one schedule. So again, our recommendation is that you adopt the proposed fee schedules. The effective date, I know, is a little bit of an odd date, but that is the date scheduled of the go-live of the permitting system, so that these will be the new fees that will be implemented the day we implement the new schedule. And then we are also asking that we, that you adopt that they will be updated by CPI, not this July, because we're implementing and starting it so close to July. So we'll skip one year of CPI increases and then again, beginning in 2021, that we would again start increasing this by CPI. With that, if you have any questions.
So are there any technical clarifying questions? Ari?
Just curious about the, what's the maximum subsidy or the infringement upon the general fund that you guys allowed when you're looking at all these fee structures?
Honestly, there's so many I don't know off the top of my head. I know-
Was there like, did you set some kind of benchmark for it and say if it went above this level, we definitely have to look at this and-
We didn't. I mean, honestly, gray water is the only one that I'm thinking of where we actually consciously made a decision to charge it lower than full cost. Everything else, we charge slightly bit lower than full cost, mainly just to have a better round number. That's, honestly, that's kind of how we did it. There weren't, other than gray water is the only one I can think of where we consciously chose to subsidize.
No, I was just, and part of it was, you know, was there any red flags that were coming up that really told you that you were undercharging fees in certain areas because the subsidy was so great?
No.
No, okay. Good.
Other questions? Aurelio?
How much outreach do we have to our developers in our building? The ones that are going to be affected on this? And another question that might be directed to the city is, this is a first public hearing on this. So can we move this for approval for our next meeting versus approving in this meeting since it's the first public hearing and it gives an opportunity for those that don't know about it can have an opportunity to come and speak to it?
So Councilmember Gonzalez, yes, if it's the will of the council, you could always direct staff to defer taking action on it tonight by motion, and we could bring it back at a later date certain, if that's a step the council would like to take.
And so back to staff, how much outreach do we have and how much do our building developers and folks that are going to be impacted by these changes in fees that we receive?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to comment, two comments, and then I'll let Susie talk about the developers. We did meet the state requirements of two weeks of public notice and publishing for public notice. And I would also say that the increases that are resulting for this are really, in most cases, not terribly inconsistent from the normal increase they would have gotten under CPI. As I was discussing, a lot of the changes that were happening were more structural changes, but the cost increase isn't really that dramatic.
Thank you. I would, I would agree with that. We haven't done any specific outreach to the development community on these fees. However, in the past, with the last fee study and other fees that we've changed or added to development, we really don't get much feedback from the development-construction community, and I think mainly because these fees are just passed on to the property owner. You know, when development occurs, this isn't something that generally contractors are going to be absorbing. It would be the customer that would be absorbing them. But like Cindy said, a lot of this is cleanup. When we went to look at our fee schedule as part of our munis permitting system, we realized there were some significant issues with it, and that it could be modernized and really simplified. And like she said, we, we had UBC occupancy types rather than ICC, UBC, building code, Uniform Building Code hasn't been in effect for, I want to say, six or seven years. It's the International Code Council now. And then there were three different valuation tables depending on what type of construction. Let's say if you have a single-family house, it's kind of like the Three Little Pigs. Is it built out of straw? Is it built out of wood, or is it built out of bricks? We had three different fee schedules based on what your house would be built out on, and then different costs depending on whether it was, you know, straw or brick or wood. And what we realized is that makes no sense because it takes the same amount of time for an inspector to go out and do the inspections on those, on that house, no matter what it's made out of. And so those are the kind of changes we've made. We've consolidated that into one fee schedule instead of three.
And council, I would just add to that, that really part of this effort was being driven by the fact that we're implementing a new permitting system that will be much more user-friendly for our developers in the community, and I believe that the implementation timeframe is predicated on when these fees can get approved at this point. So if there was to be a delay in action on it, which of course the council's welcome to do, there would be some implications of when we can implement the system as a whole.
And we really need to get that up and running.
Are there any other questions, clarifying or technical? Lowell?
I don't know if this clarifies anything or not, but I'm kind of wondering if, if more people applied for permits, would the economy of scale with more people applying, would that help maybe reduce the fees somewhat?
No, because let's say if this year, five people applied to build new houses, and then next year, 10 people applied to build new houses, we, what would change is actually the number of people needed to do the inspections rather than the actual cost going down. Because an inspector still has to go out and do all the inspections required for each of those, each of those houses. So really, the workflow, the economy of scale wouldn't be there. What we would need is more bodies to actually be doing the work, and the fees are set on the cost recovery of staff time.
I'm glad to see that we have a lot of inspection and a lot of opportunities here, but I hate to bring the big elephant into the room. There are people who do things in this town without getting a permit, and how is that fair to those who do get a permit and their fees are raised? Meanwhile, folks do additions, rear add-ons to their house, roofs, fences, remodels, all kinds of stuff without any permits. What happens?
Well, if, just to let you know, we do have a code enforcement officer that is working on the weekends, and they have been successful in catching a lot of the weekend construction going on. But if you are caught doing construction without permits, you do get to come in and you get to pay double for your permit fees. So whatever permits the council chooses to, or whatever fees council chooses to adopt if you do tonight, and someone gets caught building without permits, they'll come in and pay twice that, plus any code enforcement time.
What happens when they just don't pay and do it anyway?
Well, I don't know how to answer that. If nobody reports them and we don't catch them, then-
What happens when we catch them and they do it anyway?
We can lean their property. We have, we have had some ongoing, and I know we've brought some of these to council and really tackled some of our ongoing problems, but we have had code enforcement cases in the past that the property owner would just pay thousands of dollars in liens on their property tax each year rather than, than, rather than fix their code enforcement violation. But our code enforcement in the last year has really been focusing on taking those repeat offenders or chronic offenders and really trying to attack them holistically so we take care of the problem.
Well, I think it's a significant problem in this community because there are people who seem to be able to do things and get away with it, and even if it's a lien on their property, they don't pay their property tax. They wait for somebody to die or the place to go into foreclosure or some other bad thing happens that doesn't seem to have an immediate consequence. I don't know who gets stuck with those bills other than the taxpayers.
Lowell, if I could answer some of your questions. We also have the ability to red-tag the property as well in order to stop the work that's being conducted. So that's another method of being able to recover some of our costs for the services that we provide and also rectify the problem that they have caused. Quite occasionally, also, when we got this kind of work, that owner sometimes passes an illegal, substandard construction onto somebody else that buys the house, too. Those individuals then are expected to recognize that they have that condition and come in and see us as well. I don't like to see any new owner being stuck with a construction that didn't have a building permit on it, but it does happen as well, too, and that's even more challenging to deal with because now we have a new owner that basically said, I didn't realize that this had occurred. And that usually ends up being a civil matter between the previous owner and the current owner.
Thank you very much. I think you have given some good valuable information to the public there, and hopefully that people would be more willing to play by the rules if they knew what the rules are, and here we got some new rules and some new fees to go with it. And I think it just kind of illustrates the understaffing that we sometimes have and our inability to figure out what's really going on in neighborhoods and communities, and for other people to speak up and point out these things to you folks.
Do we have any other council comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hearst, I wanted to explain what happens if someone does not pay their property taxes or does not pay the liens which should get attached to their property taxes. After five years, the county tax collector forecloses on the property and sells it to a member of the public for the unpaid taxes, penalties, and any unpaid fees. And you see those advertisements in the paper usually once a year. There's usually a list, and people do buy those properties at those tax sales in those situations, or the person who incurred those comes in and pays the county tax collector all of the money, plus the penalties, plus the interest, plus the cost of sale. So the money is collected, and the taxpayers do not bear that expense.
And does any of that come back to the city in any way?
It comes back to the city just as any other property tax would come back to the city in the same proportions and in the same way.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. You mentioned that you give lower fees and subsidize gray water. Have you considered doing the same thing to nonprofits that provide services identified in the strategic plan? That's part one. Part two is, have you considered giving this type of service subsidy to construction for those developers that provide low-income housing?
We have not as part of this, this fee update because, again, this is only focusing on the building fees, but what our housing division is working on is a grant program for affordable housing developers to help pay for development fees. So stay tuned.
That's great. What about the nonprofits that provide services identified in our strategic plan?
We have not considered that, no.
Would you be willing to consider it?
If the council asked us to-
Well, I was thinking, we just, last week, Councilmember Francisco reminded us that we had a great grand opening and ribbon-cutting of the Pahara Valley Prevention and Student Assistance new building. And I know, talking to the CEO, she talked to me about all the fees. And I know, talking to the CEO, she talked to me about all the fees that had to be paid. And they're providing a great, great service to our community. And so it would be that type of development. So I would ask you to consider it.
And Mayor Garcia, I would just add to that, that, you know, part of the thought process around developing the fees is to what extent the council would want to support a subsidy and to what extent the general fund could afford to backfill that lost revenue. And in most cases, the majority of the fees you see in front of you were established because that's the cost for staff to deliver that service, to review those projects, to go out and complete the building inspections, in the case of the PVPSA project. And so while they're very worthwhile organizations and fantastic projects, we also have limited resources on the general fund side as well, and so there are trade-offs involved there.
Well, and those trade-offs, just keeping in mind that it's being done for gray water, okay? So if it's being done for one group, we need to consider it for others also. Okay. So...
Mayor, if I just may add, we've only got like three or four gray water permits a year. It's not an extensive amount. So we're not talking about a lot of permits for that. Okay? So we're really not supplementing a whole lot.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other... Yes.
I just want to make a comment. And it's going to go back again to the developers and having developers have enough time to react to this. Because when you start talking about big developments that are going to happen, are we going to scare away developers from creating more housing in our community by these changes? Because they're the ones that are really being impacted by it. And again, I mean, I would rather, prefer to have one or two developers here speak upon it and get their point of view than nobody. And I think this topic is as important as cannabis or alcohol, that we should have some interaction with our community. And I think that, and that's why I would prefer to see a motion that defers us to approve for the next meeting.
Is that a motion you're putting on the floor?
No, because we ain't got there yet until you want to make a motion.
Okay, because we still have to do public comments. Okay, Felipe Denari.
So, you know, I would like to find out if there's any charts that have sort of what local communities have, what other local communities relevant to Watsonville, like Salinas, Gilroy, just different cities in the county maybe, and some in Monterey County that kind of gauge off what they're doing and see if there's any comparisons.
I will say that when we did the comprehensive fee study for the entire city two years ago, we did have the consultants do a lot of those comparisons, and we were found to be really kind of reasonable. And like I said, this one, again, the changes were more structural than cost. So these increases are not... Two years ago when we did this is when actually developers saw bigger increases because we hadn't done a comprehensive fee study in about 10 years prior to that. This one, the increases really aren't dramatic. The change is more in the structure and not in the cost, if that makes sense.
Yes, so instead of doing three things for one cost, you can itemize it individually.
Exactly, but what people would have been paying for the last time, you know, versus, you know, what it is now versus what we hope it to be in May, the increase is not a big increase.
Okay.
Ari?
Well, that's what I was going to ask about because I heard you mention that we're skipping this year and going to next year with the CPI. Is that correct? And that was partly what the price increase would have happened if we continued with whatever the CPI would have been for this year. Those increases would have been reflective of what you put on there now. So really, what you talked about is structural changes. That's what I understood, is where the combinations of things were either tried to simplify.
Yes.
Right? And, but the cost itself would have been regularly scheduled based on the CPI.
Exactly. Exactly.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address this issue?
Yes, I would. Should not be any surprise. Steve Treheal, Paharo Village. In Paharo Village, when I talk to my fellow neighbors, almost all of whom are past 55, whenever I bring up the idea of getting a building permit, they begin to look like the painting, "The Scream." They not only do not want to deal with the city, sorry, folks, but it's no offense intended, they don't want to deal with the time or the money. And many of the contractors say, "Well, we'll just sort of push that away and we just go on with getting it built." If we're going to build granny units in this community, and we need to, quite a few, in order to provide some reasonably-costed housing, God knows there isn't any in this community, including my own home, $1,650 a month mortgage, although that's cheap compared to it would be if it were in San Jose. Nonetheless, folks, you need to understand, the building department needs to understand, they're not the most popular group in the city services department. They need to do outreach, especially to seniors. It would be nice if you came to one of our HOA meetings, they're the second Wednesday of every month on six o'clock, and explain the process and maybe get a little more buy-in because frankly, the seniors in our community, they don't like the building department and they would like to be able to put an addition on or change the front porch or do a variety of various things that might require a permit without the permit. So Lowell, you're absolutely right, and I'm glad you brought it up because that's a fact. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would anybody else like to address the council?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Becky Steinbruner. I live in Aptos, but I'm running for county supervisor in the second district. So I always enjoy coming to your meetings, even if I'm not running. So I applaud you for reviewing. That must have been a lot of work, and I think that simplifying the process is always a good thing so that people know what to expect and it's not just coming back again and again for more money every time and that it's a lot simpler and clear-cut for those who are going to get permits. I always wonder why things have been set up the way they were, though. Was there some reasoning that it was set up that way? And I'm happy to hear that you've contacted and worked with your staff to really have their buy-in. They're the ones in the trenches and they know what's best, but I'm wondering, why was it ever set up that complicated way? My second question is, what will be the fiscal impact of this? Will it make it simpler and therefore less staff time and more money actually coming in? What is the overall projected fiscal impact? I would also like to ask along, I like that you're supporting gray water, but I would like to ask that you also support historic preservation so that when there are structures that are having something done to upgrade or remodel them or make them safer, that they get a break to support historic preservation of some of the beautiful structures you have here in the city. Fourthly, I like Commissioner's, Councilmember Gonzalez's idea that you do get more buy-in from the public. And to that end, I think it would be good public relations to just put out a simple email blast if you have the contact information for those who have business licenses doing construction and wiring and things like that in the city, just to let them know that you are considering it and to ask for their input. And I think most people would be very appreciative of that. Thank you very much for your good work.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that would like to approach the council? Then I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for it to be deferred, put on our next agenda item.
Deferred on what purpose?
Just to get more public input.
Is there a second to that motion? Hearing no second, there is no motion, so I'll still entertain a motion in terms of... Oh. I'll entertain a motion to approve staff recommendation.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Yes.
I think there's a lot of unlicensed contractors out there that cruise around and take advantage of all the loopholes that exist. And maybe they're competent, maybe they do really good work, but they undercut the city and they make all the other taxpayers pay extra. It's like we're subsidizing those folks that don't get a permit.
Any further comments?
I want to thank you both for all the work you've done to simplify and streamline this very complicated system that we've had. I think it'll be to the benefit of the community, but to Aurelio's point, and I'm not always a fan of getting something to council and then telling us that, you know, we have to vote for it today because, you know, because of whatever. I sort of feel like if Aurelio needed that opportunity, that space to maybe bring in more community feedback, I would appreciate having that option. And sometimes I feel like it's one of those, like, you have to do it now or it's it, you know? So that's just sort of my feedback, that hopefully we can get more items up. Sometimes I get that you can't do that, but if we can, if we can get stuff, or maybe we do have the flexibility to do things like Councilmember Gonzalez had recommended, I think we would really appreciate that. But I know you guys do your best, and I know it's not always possible, but thank you.
Any other comments? Felipe?
It was mentioned earlier about the weekend inspectors going out on the weekend. I just wanted to, you know, make a note that it's census time, and if we can be cognizant that, you know, people are going to be even more delirious of doing census, especially if they lived in those non-traditional areas, like multiple families in a household or in a garage unit, to be careful and be cognizant that it is census time and that we got to move, tread the waters cautiously.
Councilman Aurelio?
I think with what Councilman Lowell alluded to was that, you know, he's indicating to the folks that aren't pulling out permits. And what we're talking about here is the people are coming up and requesting these permits. And so it's not so much those folks that are being affected by this, but what's being affected by this are the honest people that are coming for it. And that's why I feel it's important that they understand what's being brought before us. Two weeks of notification of a public hearing in the Register Paharonian that's published once a week, how much library posted, how many times is a developer going to walk into the library and look at the board and read it? Not very often. How many times is a developer really going to go out and get the Register Paharonian and read it for the public notices? Not very often. And so that's why when we do public hearings, I feel that it's important that we give the most opportunity to our community to understand the situation, the conditions that are occurring within our city and what we're implementing. This may be good for them, but in reality, if you start looking at a household that says, you know, "Well, this is going to cost me more now," a single builder versus a multi-developer, for him it might be more beneficial. And that'd be good to hear versus not hearing nothing. And so, and that's why I was requesting that we kind of defer this into our next agenda, just to give the community that opportunity, instead of like fellow Councilman Parker was saying, that we tend to be brought items to our agenda with a due date. And so they say, you know, "We have to do this or else we're going to miss this due date." Well, if staff works a lot, I appreciate all the work they do, it's not knocking staff, but it's kind of like, you guys put us in a position of saying, "Well, we don't do this, then we're not going to meet our deadline." Well, it would be better if they brought it prior to us so we have enough time to get that community input, if there's any, and then we can, I guess, as they say, CYA ourselves and do our due diligence and be transparent to our community. And this isn't a lot of topics that come before us as a city council. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Yes.
So Mayor and Council, I do want to clarify that the council can certainly postpone this, and there's not a drop-dead date on when the council makes the decision. What I mentioned earlier was just that it would have some implications on when we roll out the system. But we've been without a new permitting system for several years now. If that were to happen for a few additional months, it would not be the end of the world. So I don't want the council to feel that you have to absolutely make a decision tonight. That wasn't our intent, to have the council feel like you're up against the corner. So if there's interest in wanting us to do some additional outreach, we're happy to do that. As Susie mentioned, it's always a challenge engaging our developers, and in this case, because we're not in a season of large rate increases and one more of simplifying and consolidating, I just don't think it was perceived as being a priority in this case. But we can certainly reach out and do that work if that's the interest of the council.
I have a question for the city manager in that the conversation that's taking place, particularly from councilmembers Aurelio and Francisco, in terms of my experience, and I've been here five years now, my experience, and it's not the first time it's been brought up because I brought it up myself, is that the public hearing, and this is a public hearing, the public hearing has been put as this is the community input that we're going to need to make this decision. And so my question to you is, you're hearing from several of the members of the council that we need public hearings to be more thought of as this is community input. So what can we do, what can you do with staff to assure that the public hearing isn't the only place where community has an opportunity to give that input?
So I appreciate that question, Mayor. And staff always places community input and community outreach as a priority. A few of the examples over the last year has been the Complete Streets Plan, the cannabis ordinance that we're in the process of updating. Later this evening, you'll hear from Nick in our Parks and Community Services Department on the Park Strategic Plan that also had significant outreach efforts involved with that. So we do always strive to be very proactive in making sure that the community has opportunities to weigh in on actions that the council is taking. And you have my commitment that on this item tonight, again, we're happy to do additional outreach. We would welcome any input from developers in our community, and if the council's interested in doing that, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor, and so depending if the motion fails or passes, we'll determine if we need to make another motion. So roll call, please.
Estrada?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
No.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hearst?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Garcia?
Yes. And the vote is?
42 passes.
It passes. Okay, so staff recommendation has been passed. We'll be moving on.
Mayor, could I just make a suggestion at this point?
Yes.
Maybe of the folks who have had permits or are coming in for permits, if they had a chance to maybe take a survey or somebody ask them at the counter what they think or something like that, we might be able to get some feedback.
After they get the permit.
So Councilman Hearst, if I can add to that, actually, we are going to be looking at a survey to all of our developers that have interacted with our development team over the last year to collect input, not just on fees, but their experience overall dealing with our development staff. And so with that, as we're rolling out with changes, including our new permit system, that feedback will allow us to continue improving.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I can also make a request, if any departments ever have any public hearings, could we just get an email for that and maybe we can blast it out too through our social media or through our... I mean, I know it's always hard to get people to come to these public hearings, but at least I feel like if we try, then on our part to help the situation, maybe we can get some more people to participate.
We have been emailing the public hearing notices to the council when, after we send it to the Register Paharonian before it publishes. So for the next council meeting that we have on Thursday, you will be receiving a notice, with a public hearing notice.
If you could put it on the subject, like, public notice or hearing, I appreciate that.
We'll do that.
Yeah, thank you.
So for the next council meeting that we have on Thursday, you will be receiving a notice, with a public hearing notice.
If you could put it on the subject, like, public notice or hearing, I appreciate that.
We'll do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Felipe?
So Ellen, maybe if you can correct me if I'm wrong, there's also a table, metal table, between your office and B's office that has all the public hearings on there too. That's the way I kind of just look at them, pull out the books, the paperwork there.
Okay, we're going to be moving on, and this is new business continued. 2016 consideration of approval of City of Watsonville 2020 Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan, Ramsey Park Master Plan, and City Plaza Master Plan. We will have a staff report to begin with.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Nick Kalabaki, but I'm the Parks and Community Services Director for the City of Watsonville. I'm here this evening with Corbin Schneider from Verde Design Incorporated, who works for the landscape architecture firm that we worked very closely with throughout this entire planning process. Okay, sorry about that. So just before we get into recommendations and into the heart of this presentation, just want to give a brief overview of where we came from and why we embarked on this process in the first place. So the document before you, in terms of the 2020 Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan, really represents a year-long community engagement process. What this, where this all came from really, is it stems back to 2009, when the city council adopted the city's parks, or the most recent Parks and Recreation Master Plan. However, largely due to the timing of when that document was adopted, given that it was kind of in the middle of the Great Recession, not a whole lot of progress over the past 10 years has been made on kind of what was outlined in the document as far as goals and objectives. So the document really, for the most part of the past decade, sat on a shelf. So really, what the main goal of the strategic planning process was, was to take that 2009 Master Plan and use that as a base to really accomplish a few things. First, to update and reaffirm community goals for Parks and Recreation programs and facilities. Second, to define community-driven prioritization of all of the different needs of our park system and our facilities in terms of deferred maintenance, but also to take a look at what our opportunities are in terms of expansion and revitalization. And then finally, to develop an action plan to move these projects and initiatives forward. So this strategic plan document is really intended to serve as an indentum to the 2009 Master Plan, and provides us with an action plan that's relevant, practical, and achievable, given our economic constraints and potential. And it also addresses current funding mechanisms and identifies future funding opportunities. The plan also includes two park-specific master plans. So it's a little bit confusing, right, because we have our 2009 Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which is kind of our overall, like, it's kind of like the general plan, if you will, for Parks and Recreation. And then park-specific master plans really are a master plan for a specific space, so a park space in particular. And the two that are before you tonight that are included in the strategic plan are master plans for the City Plaza and for Ramsey Park. So these master plans really help to create a vision for the entirety of park sites. So as you look at amenities that are within a certain park site, such as a restroom, or a skate park, or a pump track, or a playground, whatever it is, it helps to kind of piece those things together so that they all fit together in a way that makes sense, and really kind of speaks to the needs of the community that it's serving, to ensure that the amenities that are included in the park space really work towards meeting those needs. So that's really what we're looking at tonight. We're looking at a master plan, or sorry, a strategic plan, and two park-specific master plans. So our recommendation for this evening is to adopt a resolution adopting all three of those. First, our Recreation Strategic Plan, our Ramsey Park Master Plan, and finally, our City Plaza Master Plan. In terms of process for this evening, because there's three kind of large items that we're going to be tackling, we're going to take one at a time. So we'll start with the 2020 Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I'm going to go through our process and talk through kind of an outline of the document, and then we'll pause to answer questions and hear comments, and then we'll consider recommendation for that plan. So once we move past the strategic plan, then we'll go through Ramsey Park and do the same, and then finally, we'll end with the City Plaza tonight. So with that said, I'm going to pass things on to Corbin, and he's going to walk us through the presentation here.
So as Nick mentioned, the original Master Plan was a document that may have sat for a while, but it was kind of resurrected in the beginning of our work with the public and the strategic plan. And we didn't want to just shelf it and just say it had no value in the past, because it does, and we used that as a springboard to work with the community, both with the staff, city staff, stakeholders, and then with the community at large. And in doing so, there were specific objectives that we had in going to the public and then reviewing the Master Plan, and then how do we move this forward as a template to then take a look at specific sites, specific, overall for the trails, overall for the parks, but as we'll talk about tonight also, specific sites, so that they are looked at and developed in a way that are respective of the master, original Master Plan and the strategic plan. So some of the strategic plan objectives that we have and we'll talk about tonight are describing the existing parks and the trails' conditions, identifying whether the public input was obtained through the long, almost a year-long process, including goals, objectives, and prioritizations, we'll mention that tonight, delineation of actionable objectives to improve the city parks, programs, and trails. So with that, the purpose realistically was to provide the city with a framework to guide future improvements within city limits. And that could be simply trail systems, it could be specific city parks, the City Plaza, and other objectives that would come forward in the development and improvements throughout the city. With that would be the categorization and feedback that was received, and then laying out a plan for the future enhancements citywide, in the park system and for the trails. So with that, we had a, I will just tell you, a public process that had more meetings, I think, than our firm has ever worked with, and I appreciate the comments that came up tonight about the public process on other items that do come before the commission. It was very long. We had staff workshops to start off with, stakeholders meetings, really getting people who are involved in these, in the overall city, as well as specific sites. We looked at community meetings, three separate meetings, a public survey that had 153 respondents, and in our firm, that's about the second highest number of respondents we've had at a city this size. So we feel that was very successful, got a lot of comments, a lot of input from that. Public workshops, both overall for the strategic plan, and then very specific for City Plaza and Ramsey Park. We also did pop-up meetings in each of the sites that were valuable, and then came back again, and each time we were presenting what we had been hearing, what the input was, and then came to the stakeholders and presented that, and then got their input based on that feedback, and then moved into the strategic plan and the concepts for Ramsey and City Plaza, and then worked with the Parks and Rec Commission and city council. In the past, we've come before you and presented, or the Parks and Rec, and presented it. So tonight, we'll be looking at the strategic plan and those two sites with respect to impact and feedback that we received, and then the concepts that came out of that. So the city park system, it's not a great graphic, but if you look closely, this is just basically a plan that shows all of the city parks. And one of the items that did come up and was actually discussed quite a bit was that the northeast portion of the city is lacking in parks. It's, when you look at whether it be neighborhood, corner parks, regional parks, it's kind of a desolatory when it comes to open green space for people to use on weekends, they have to otherwise travel to their parks throughout other parts of the city. And there was a lot of great discussion that came out of that, a lot of equality and equity discussions on how do we solve that, and how do we make that part of the strategic plan so that in the future, what we move forward with is equitable for all, and then maybe even works towards resolving that problem in the northeast part of the city. Did a little bit of overview of the city parks and of the issues. The city's got 143.34 acres of parks, of parkland, and you can see it's broken down into different types of parks. A lot of pocket parks, small neighborhood parks that people can go to just down in their neighborhood, and then it works into both neighborhood and community parks where they get larger. The park issues, these were pretty relative. When we had input from every type of meeting and including the survey, these comments kept coming up, ADA compliance in the paths, we've got older parks, we've got situations that things need to be complied with ADA, because they don't now, concrete and asphalt paving, fencing and gates, and security of those parks and the open spaces, playgrounds, plant material and site furnishings, looking at the age. And one thing that was brought up a lot was deferred maintenance, and how that had, maintenance had kind of been deferred, and we needed to take care of some of the issues now as we go forward. The park trail system has came out in both the public as well as realistically looking at the city, it's got a great trail system, but there were some things that came up that people felt could be improved. And looking down at the trail issues, again, safety, walking at nighttime, going underneath the bridges, the connectors of different parts of the city and having destinations that aren't provided by the trail system now, as well as just a basic standard ADA compliance and accessibility. So with that, there were many findings. It would take a while to go through these, but a lot of them really talk about safety, barriers getting from one place to another, resources and the maintenance, both of the walking and the circulation materials, as well as the landscape for safety, signage, graffiti, things like that. So people were really concerned that we just take a look at the maintenance and upgrading, the maintenance and the upgrading of what exists now, as well as a couple of the trail systems that would go within the city, be extended, as well as into county land. So looking at the strategic plan, there were three major goals that were actually part, they kind of started as part of the Master Plan, and we want to evaluate those and look at the public and say, are these still realistic? What we found was they were realistic, but they were tweaked a bit by all the input that we received. So the first goal is exceptional parks and facilities. People were really looking for the city to provide safe and well-maintained, accessible parks and facilities. And what it kind of focused out in a lot of the feedback was looking and identifying a funding strategy, and looking at improving the facilities at the City Plaza, Ramsey Park, looking at the sports fields that exist around the city, as well as what could be utilized on public land with schools and even churches, and then looking at the possibility of a future indoor gymnasium. Goal number two, impactful programs. This was an overshadowing, this was a lot of discussion, celebrating Watsonville's cultural heritage and encouraging community building through the provision of programs, services, events, and facilities that are culturally relevant, responsive to community priorities, and the support of health and the wellness and personal development of the public safety. I'll just tell you from a professional's point of view, your community is very involved. We had a good turnout, we were getting anywhere from 20 to 54 people per meeting, averaging around 30 people per meeting, which was fantastic. We had, and they didn't just sit and listen and then go home, they were very active and very proactive in their comments and such, and the action items came out of that. And again, some of those we've already kind of discussed. Goal number three, a high-performance team. They realized, the public input, the people who came, as well as city staff, realized we can't do this alone. We need to partner with the school district, we need to partner with churches and other organizations that may have land and playgrounds and areas that we could do, you know, joint venture with and work together with to expand what we already have. So that would be ensuring organizational effectiveness and fiscal stability for long-term community benefit, so that everybody benefits. In that, we asked for them to prioritize things that had been coming up over the many meetings, and again, number one you can see is addressing the deferred maintenance, really looking at the upgrades and just keep, and making better what we already have. Construction of the City Plaza Conceptual Plan and Ramsey Park Conceptual Plan, and you can see there's a number of areas that were focused on and kept coming up, and as we took that plan apart, and we'll talk a little bit about that later. But again, just a very, it was very easy to prioritize it, because a lot of the comments we heard throughout the different meetings were very similar. So people had the same idea.
Okay, so here's the fun part. So you heard Corbin talk quite a bit about the need to kind of figure out, you know, how do we finance, or how do we pay for all of the needs in our community, you know, for maintenance to future needs and future facilities and whatnot. So our strategic plan really helped us to do three things. One is to identify what our current needs are in our current system, based on today's dollars and today's facilities and what they include right now. The second thing that it helped us do was to hear from the public to help us prioritize those needs. You'll see on the slide here, we have about $18.2 million in deferred maintenance today. So it's not a small amount of money. Some of the pictures that are shown here are pictures that I'm sure I think most of the council have seen before, but they depict some of our older play areas or areas where there used to be a play structure where there is not currently. And that $18.2 million doesn't account for renovations of parks, development and maintenance of new parks and facilities, or the expansion of recreation programs. So that $18.2 really is just to take care of what we have today. It's not to expand playgrounds or do any of those types of things. So through the strategic plan, we've really been able to help prioritize that $18.2 million so that we know from the public's point of view, what are the most important things to take care of first. So as funds become available and as we identify new funding sources, we know what direction to head in. The third piece, or third kind of financial, I think, outcome of the strategic plan is to help us figure out how to develop a path forward. You know, how do we increase the amount of money that's coming in so that we can help address some of these issues and move our system forward? So I want to talk through all three of those things a little bit further here. So in terms of our current funding for capital improvements, and when I talk about capital improvements, I'm talking about, you know, really addressing those deferred maintenance needs, that $18 million, and being able to finance new projects as well. So we have, of course, our capital improvement program, or our CIP program through the city. And over the past couple of years, since the CIP program's been kind of revived, Parks and Community Services has been fortunate to receive about $250,000 annually for the past couple of years to help address some of these issues. We also have our park development fund, so this is our impact fees from developments. And we've averaged, I mean, the funds kind of trickle in, so we've averaged about $110,000 annually into that account, which is, I mean, some money, but it's really not a whole lot of money. And we've also received funds through our community development block grant, or CDBG, for the past several years, in the amount of about $300,000 to help, again, with these deferred maintenance needs. So next steps and opportunities, these different opportunities here are outlined in the financial section of the strategic plan documents. But first step is to update and align the city's CIP with the strategic plan. So we're working very closely with Cindy and her team throughout the CIP planning process this year to help make sure that all of our deferred maintenance needs that we discovered also align with the CIP documents. We are going to be taking a look very soon at updating, or potentially updating, our existing Parks and Recreation impact fees. We, as all of you know through Measure Y, I've been kind of, I've been talking about the potential of sales tax revenues coming to our departments, and have been strategizing how we use those funds. You know, if and when Measure Y passes, we're looking at about $300,000 for Parks and Community Services each year, and one of the debates that we go back and forth with is, you know, do we use that money to go into operations and maintenance year-over-year along with youth programs, or do we take some of that money and issue a bond backed by that annual revenue to help gather a larger sum of money to kind of knock out some of our needs a little bit faster? We can also look at user fees, and of course, grant funds, partnerships, and explore the opportunity for parcel tax for parks as well. So our next steps in terms of the strategic plan is really to kind of prioritize our funding opportunities and take a look at what makes the most sense to move forward with. opportunities and take a look at what makes the most sense to move forward with. And that will dovetail right into our five-year work plan or our strategic action plan, which will really be kind of the living document, kind of where the rubber meets the road, action plan that we'll use. It's pretty much developed, well, it's halfway developed already. It basically takes the goals from this document and puts them into actionable items that we'll be tackling over the next five years, kind of year over year. And with that, just coming back to our recommendation here, so staff recommends that the council adopt our 2020 Parks and Recreation Strategic Plan. And with that said, we'd be happy to answer any questions on the strategic plan.
So at this time, if there's any technical clarifying questions specific to the strategic plan. Ari?
Just a quick procedural question. Are we going to treat these as three different?
It sounds like that's a recommendation that we're going to have three different motions.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Questions? Clarifying or technical questions on the strategic plan? Felipe?
You mentioned other funding sources. Do we have anything down the pipeline coming down from the county in terms of parks measures or the state?
In terms of the county, there isn't, I think, like, you know, a straight allocation necessarily. Each of our county supervisors has a certain amount of money set aside that they're budgeted for, for parks-related projects. And so we have been in conversation with Supervisor Capit about some of those funds, and we'll continue those conversations as we move down the road. Other than that, from the county, that's kind of where we stand. As far as the state goes, back in 2018, voters in California passed Proposition 68, which was a $4 billion bond that allocates all that money towards either park or waterway projects. And so the, you know, the good majority of those funds are set aside for park-related projects, and they're all kind of being, or that money is being deviated out through grant processes. So there's a number of different programs that are funded through Prop 68 in terms of grants, one of which is the grant that we applied for the City Plaza build out of the master plan several months back. There's also a per capita plan that we'll, that I'll talk about a little bit as we get to Ramsey Park as well.
Thank you.
Lowell?
I hope Nick will be talking to Supervisor Friend as well, because everything over in District Three and the northwest frontier, as Dobie used to call it, not much park space over there either unless you count pocket parks. So let's don't forget that we have two supervisors representing the city.
Any other comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Nick, so in case of another recession, would we just shelve this strategic plan?
I don't think so. What's kind of different about this strategic plan versus the overall master plan is that it really gets to more specific goals. What we've done as we've started to build out our action plan, you know, so really, you know, what are the concrete things that we're going to do to make this action plan come to life? We've also, we've identified which of those items are attached to a budget allocation. And I'd say maybe, I don't know, a quarter of the items that we're actually working on are actually tied to, you know, things that actually cost money that is above and beyond what we're allocated today. So a lot of what we're going to be working on, a lot of the outcomes of this plan have more to do with how we operate and how we operate more cost-effectively and more smoothly to provide a better service to the public. And the other part of this, you know, in terms of financials, is really identifying ways that we can create systems so that there is kind of more consistent revenue that comes into the department so that when those recessions hit, it doesn't hit us as hard.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on the 8.2 million deferred maintenance. Does this include our senior center now that we've incorporated into our Parks and Recs?
Yes.
Okay, good. I was like, we're still going to have to add that to you? Thank you.
Other questions? Ari?
Hi, Nick. Thanks for all your hard work on this, reading through all of it. And I've been reading it and I've been looking at all the different parks and all the, I guess that's considered deferred maintenance, boxes, things that are exposed, splinters, you know, all these different things. So I thought Councilman Estrada's question was really interesting, especially from my point of view as a city council person. If we're limited on budget, would you be coming back to us then? I was trying to look for the priority here, or would you be coming back to us as city council so that we could, you know, and the public, express our priorities about how to spend that money if we're limited on what we need to spend?
If I could jump in here, I think the best way to look at the strategic plan and the capital improvements contained within it is that as part of the biannual budget and the budget refresh we'll be bringing in the next few months, the council gets to make decisions around the overall available capital funding we have across all of our projects outside of the Parks Department and within it. As Nick had pointed out earlier, we've had, it's been somewhat limited over the last few years, only about $250,000 a year total. And of course, the needs here far exceed that, and so the council will be faced with making some decisions and prioritizing within that across all of our general fund departments. And we do have a long list of deferred maintenance.
So are you saying yes in a general way, but not in a specific way?
I think it will be very specific because what you'll see in the upgraded CIP program that Cindy will bring forward to the council is you'll see a list of all of the different deferred maintenance needs across our system that will add up to $18.2 million just on the parks end. And as we compile all of those lists, part of the process is also for us to prioritize, you know, basically put numbers next to each of those projects. And as we work towards doing that, I mean, ours is pretty much done, but what we've used, we prioritize our items based on what we heard from the community. And so when those come back to the council with the list of all of the CIP needs across the entire city, you know, I mean, it's really going to be council's decision to decide which, I mean, if the items that are recommended to be funded be funded in that way, or if there's ones that you'd want to replace and that's.
Yeah, I was just thinking, even in a general way, you said if we don't have all the funding that we need, then we have to step back and are we moving forward or are we focusing on deferred maintenance or are we doing 80% deferred maintenance and 20% moving forward? Would that be a city council decision?
Yes, and staff will bring recommendations around that. There are times when projects don't move forward that have been funded for different reasons that where the funding could be reallocated to another need that we have. And so I think it's important with each budget and CIP update that we bring to the council, you have an opportunity to look at it fresh across all the project needs we have. As Nick will probably talk a little bit about later tonight, we also have some grant funding opportunities as well. So of course, if there's a project where we have an opportunity to leverage it with state funding, the plaza being a good example, obviously that's going to bump it up in priority as those opportunities come up.
I think just real quick on that, another thing to point out too is that although the $18.2 million in deferred maintenance and all the products that are tied to that are a high priority for us to move forward with and are identified in the strategic plan, it's not the only goal that's in the strategic plan. So there's a lot of goals that we have set in there that are tied to programs, you know, such as public art or moving forward with operations of the senior center and so on and so forth. And so all of those things, of course, will continue and progress as part of the strategic plan.
I read every bit of it, and I want you to know, I was like, wow.
That was about 240 pages worth. Adelio?
Yeah, I have a question, and this is in regards to the plaza and.
But we're not talking about the plaza right now, we're talking just about.
I understand that.
Oh, okay.
I understand that, but I was just making reference so that way you know what bathroom we was going to talk about. In regards to the bathroom at the plaza, and it had already been funded, is this project going to move forward? Because it was prior to moving forward before the strategic plan for the plaza came about.
Yes, yes. So regarding, and we'll get more into our conversations about the plaza as we move into the next topic, but the restroom for the plaza is budgeted for, and you'll see that it's on the strategic, or the master plan for the plaza as well. And like you mentioned, you know, it's always been funded and always intended to move forward. What the master plan for the plaza does is it helps us identify where within the plaza that restroom should go.
Thank you, Mayor. Nick, I know like in the previous presentation, sometimes, you know, staff is sort of limited in what they can and can't do, but you mentioned like impact fees, but part of these fee reassessments, would charging families for like some of our basic programs go up as well? Because I mean, most of them are pretty unaffordable for, you know, families of two, three already. And I mean, would freezing these fees hurt us or is that even possible? Or, I mean, what's the?
Yeah, so are you, looking at our user fees and updating those and looking at increases to those, you know, for participation in programs is definitely one of the strategies that they can be used to increase revenue. I think one of the, one of the kind of tenets of what we've been trying to strive for in terms of our user fees is to really kind of balance cost recovery with community access because, you know, we want to make sure that our prices are set so that we're not outpricing our community and so that our programs are affordable enough for the majority of people to participate. And those that aren't, you know, we work very closely with our friends at Parks and Community Services to offer scholarships as well to help offset those costs for those who can't afford. Again, it's one of the strategies that we're looking closely at and looking to, you know, increase revenue where we can in places that doesn't, or that don't negatively impact that community access. So we're looking at some of our more individualized programs, so things like adult sports, for example, is one area that we're looking very closely at in terms of fees. So I think the answer to your question is yes, I mean, that's definitely on the table and we're looking at that, but with the caveat of ensuring that it doesn't displace youth and families in particular who.
Thank you, I appreciate that thought right there. Thank you, Mayor.
Ari?
I have a question about the joint use of school facilities. I know that was written way back in, what was that, 2009, probably before that. How are we doing with that?
We are continuing conversations with our school district on that topic in particular. We have another meeting scheduled with them to talk about both the Mellow and then hopefully this topic next week as well. I mean, really what this comes down to also is there's a funding question as well, right? Because there's maintenance costs and whatnot on their end. And so we continue to look at models that have worked well in other communities, and we've identified kind of priority spaces that we'd like to look at potentially using as pilot sites to kick off, you know, our joint use agreements with the district.
I was reading about lack of, for the city, lack of fields, lack of courts to do these things, and at the same time, I know that the district has been fencing off their fields and fencing off their courts as well for the last five years. And it's a march that continues.
Correct, yeah. And that's really the conversation that we're having with the district is how do we, how do we unlock those gates and those fences in the after-school hours and on the weekends? And if and when we do that, how do we, how do we manage through the additional maintenance costs that that entails?
Keep me in the loop on that.
Definitely will do.
I'd like to continue to be a part of it. Thank you.
Okay, then I guess it's my turn now. My two questions are actually for District Five. I see that most of the goals from the 2009 master plan were not met. One in particularly, particular is that there was, there will be a five-acre parkland per 1,000 residents. As you know, District Five does not have a park. The strategic plan does identify the northwest area, which includes District Five, as needing parks and wants to meet that goal. So, but what is missing for me is any prioritization or timeline to make that happen. Can you address that?
Sure. Okay, so maybe we start with where we are today. So if you look at the number of acres of parkland that we have today compared to our current population, we're sitting at about two and a quarter acres of parkland per 1,000 people. So we're less than half of where our 2009 master plan identified we should be. So what that means is essentially doubling the number of acres of parkland that we have access to within our community, which is a large number to reach. So, you know, really, really, one of the key, I think, points or one of the key, the keys to, what will be the key to our success is really working closely with our districts and other large landowners in the community that have spaces already available for, for community access, you know, like playgrounds and fields and that sort of thing. You know, if we can really work closely with the district and figure out how we make joint use work, that in and of itself will help us get to that goal a lot, lot faster.
Well, I don't know about the other six districts, but again, District Five has no parks at all. So I would think that should be a priority in terms of trying to meet this goal. So I'm wanting to point that out. The second question is, I have met with you about the possibility of having open space by having a community garden on city-owned land on the corner of Pennsylvania and Maine. Does this fit into the strategic planning?
That particular property isn't necessarily called out in particular, but it definitely would help support the strategic plan in terms of exactly what you're saying in terms of increasing acres of parkland per 1,000 residents and whatnot.
So we could look at that?
Definitely.
Very good. Okay. We want now public input. Anyone that would like to address the council on this topic, please come forward.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, this is the main reason why I came to this meeting, to hear Nick do his presentation and respond to him. Because, Mayor, you couldn't be more right. Your district has no parkland. I want to remind all of you that when people drive off of Highway One and take the Freedom Boulevard exit, when they come into Watsonville, sadly, they see very ugly fenced-off, blacktop pieces of land that contain not much of anything, maybe they're providing property tax, but they're hideous. And we all know they're ugly. We have a horrific shopping center that contains, what is it, what's the name of the store that went out of business years ago? Tons of stuff. Basically, it's become an encampment, it's an homeless encampment now. Every time I go in to get my medication for my diabetes at Walgreens, I have to walk around at least a phalanx of homeless people. And they're very respectful, but folks, this does not exactly do a whole lot to entice people to come for a return visit to Watsonville. Remember, you only get one chance to make a first impression. And if we don't clean up the Watsonville, I should say the corridor along Freedom Boulevard and provide parkland for District Five, people get the notion that, oh, look at this poor, sad town. And yeah, that's the impression they take back with them and they don't return and they don't spend money on our restaurants or our gas stations or any of our facilities. We need to face up to the fact we need to do this. Second of all, I want to talk about how desperately we need restrooms in the City Plaza, Nick. Those restrooms could gag a goat. I tried to use the restrooms at the Strawberry Festival and I went to my bank, Wells Fargo, it's right there. You think they'd let me? Oh, no, we can't do that. This is for only our employees. Well, folks, the idea of the outhouse is great on a construction site or in a campground, but in a beautiful facility like our City Plaza, which is revered, it's an icon in the city, I know it's going to be hard to keep track of the graffiti and the vandalism. That's going to be a full-time job for an officer from WPD on three shifts. Nonetheless, it would provide an amenity that has never existed in that beautiful plaza that I love, and everybody else here loves it as well. And the last thing I want to address very quickly is, Atrey Park is our little park that Ari and I know real well, and I go down there, I pick up trash every day, Nick. I also pull weeds. Unidentify graffiti, I call it into Rex Rackley, and I can identify where there's been dumped trash. I call 768-3133 and have them please come by and pick it up. How about we go to, unless there's liability problems, adopt a park by local citizens in those parks? Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Becky Steinbrenner. First of all, I saw on your list synthetic turf, and I know it is a water saver, but it is also known health. And I know it is a water saver, but it is also a known health hazard, especially for youth that are asthmatic. It's difficult to keep clean and it's very hot to play on. So, even though it uses more water, I want to encourage the use of real grass and it also helps recharge the groundwater. I want to also address the question about where, what about the county? Have they any money to give us? The county collects $1,000 per bedroom for every new development in the county and incorporated through the Quimby Act. And I do know that the large development on Atkinson Lane is moving along. And that should provide quite a lot of money for parks development in that area. I also want to encourage you, as Mr. Trujillo just said, to not overlook the generosity and the support within your own community to help do cleanup and also maintenance and building. I'm a member of the Cabrillo Host Lions and that group loves projects like this. We also have the Rotary. And you have groups such as, there's a group called Veggie Lucian that loves to go out and help people learn how to garden and they help them develop gardens. To that end, Mayor Garcia, I love your idea of community gardens and I'm a big supporter of them, especially in areas with mixed ages because it tends to bring the community together and really create a sense of community over the garden, over sharing food and, and helps those who may be elderly really break out of isolation and, and develop some bonds with their neighbors. There are groups, the Santa Cruz Mountain Bike Group, I saw you had pump tracks on there. They come out and they'll build it, they will just build it and all for free. Big Creek Lumber will donate wood for gardening boxes. To schools, they do every year. For communities, they would as well. So, you've got a very good group of community people out there. And just last Saturday, I went to the opening of the skate, skate track, skateboard park in Sea Cliff Park in Aptos. That was all done with a public-private partnership. Mostly, the, the company came, offered, and the county was able to expedite the whole process and within a year, it's built. And it's got kids zooming all over the place. I also, um, let's see, I'm sorry. I think that's the last I have to say, mostly that you have a very generous community that loves being involved and loves helping kids, so bring them in. Thank you. And, and Pafaro School District also has trouble funding projects, so a partnership with the schools would also help benefit everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? Seeing none, I will bring it back for, entertain a motion. Felipe?
I'd like to move a motion to move approval for the City of Watsonville 2020 Parks and Rec Strategic Plan, Ramsey Park Master Plan and City Master Plan.
No, we're only doing the strategic plan. So, we'll cut off until strategic. Is there a second, is there a second to that motion?
Second, Mayor.
Okay, seconded by Francisco. Any further discussion?
Okay, I just have clarification on this. Because this states, and just going back, this states it's a, it's a one resolution.
Yes, there's going to be two more.
But no, but as it stated, but as it stated here, it's only a one resolution, so how can we make three motions on one resolution? That's my question to the lawyer.
To the lawyer. Well, that was the clarification question I asked at the very beginning.
Sorry, the question again is, what?
We're treating these as three separate.
We have one resolution before us, but we're going to make three motions to approve it.
Three successive motions based on three successive reports from staff, as I understand it.
Right, yes.
So, it was changed from what you see in front of you in terms of language. It was brought to us and then Ari asked for clarification.
We're just making a motion on approving.
The strategic plan right now.
Not the, not the resolution.
Well, it's.
That's the clarification I want to make sure that we have.
You're, you're adopting a resolution on the strategic plan, period.
Right.
And then the next one will be the Ramsey Park Master Plan?
Yeah, and then the.
And then the City Plaza Master Plan.
Then the City Plaza, so there'll be three. So, right now, it's just the strategic plan, yes?
I just want to make a point that this is a guidance. We don't have to have the motion that's set out here and it, because we change it before we do it. Whatever motion is on the floor is the motion that we, we speak to.
Right, what, what I would, what I would recommend is, as we take these one by one, council can give direction on each because they're in one resolution. At the end, you can take final action on all three.
I, I don't want to do that.
No, we're going to do it one at a time.
Yeah, I might do it one at a time.
We'll do it one at a time. So, any further, there's been a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Lowell and then Francisco.
I think it goes without saying that we need to be more strategic with our plan. And, and we need to find more resources and we need to focus on those equity questions. And clearly, we need more opportunities for kids and seniors and everybody else.
Francisco?
I just had one quick question. If, if we do later on consider raising user fees, will that come to us? Will we give an opportunity to the public to maybe continue doing listening sessions or conversations so we can talk things over and then see if we can come to some sort of common ground?
Typically, what we bring for the, for the council's consideration in terms of user fees are, are rental fees. And our, our program fees, I mean, at least historically, have not been brought forth to the council for consideration. What we do when we look at those fees though is, is, I mean, we, we definitely take a look at, you know, what we think our community, community can, can handle. We look at what other similar type programs locally are offered and what they're charging as well. So, I mean, because those programs are so tied to the general market, that, that really is kind of the, the most kind of pressing driving factor. You know, what's different between recreation programs and say, community development fees is that as, as consumers or as customers and members of the public, people have a choice, right? So, like if you want to sign your kid up for soccer, you can play soccer with us, but you could also play with, with PB, with PB soccer or, you know, any of the other numbers of, of soccer leagues and teams that are out in the community. And so, that really is kind of more of a driving factor behind how we set our, our user fees for, for programs in particular.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, a roll call, please.
Rada?
Yes.
Gonzalez? Fernandez?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes. Motion passes and now we will be hearing about? City Plaza, okay.
Ramsey?
That's next.
City Plaza. So, as you can see, there's City Plaza. And one of the phrases that kept coming up is, City Plaza is a community's heart. It's a gem. It is, I mean, it's been mentioned tonight that as far as the community goes, it is, it, it was spoken of as a, the heart of the city, the gem, but it also was talked about that there's a number of people that don't go there unless it's a special occasion. And so, how can we take a look at this space and create something that attracts people without changing its character? And as you can see, the, these are pretty well-known location of, you know, 20 special events, a strawberry festival and weekly farmers markets, very highly used. There were a, a number of priorities were identified. A lot of them had to do with historical, the gazebo, the layout of the walkways, looking at the theme. The pavement around the brickwork in the sidewalks and what's happening downtown was talked about, how can we bring this in and make this part of the unified kind of architecture, the street architecture of the city? Specific things were talked about, the historical fountain needs work, the landscaping needs work, deferred maintenance, there were a number of items that came up like with lighting and security and things like that. And what we found was a lot of interest in updating, but not upgrading to the point, like I mentioned, it loses its character. So, with that, we went through a long process of many different concepts and we came up with a preferred concept of which this shows. The gazebo went back and forth, back and forth, but it landed, it should stay in the center of the plaza as it is now in its existing location. Developed the plaza paving around it to give it attention, but also provide a stage area where we could focus areas of dance and music and cultural and historical things that would happen to bring the community and give a spot and a place for that. But in this concept, as you can see, we added in some terrace-type seating, very gently sloped, a, a stepping seating going back and around towards Main Street. There was a play area to the right-hand side towards Union. That was discussed about bringing, helping bring families in and giving kids a place to go. We did try to maintain the open turf play areas, but some of these did encroach in those areas. What doesn't show up real clearly here is there was also a low fencing around the park to give the, the feeling where the kids couldn't run out in the streets and things like that. There were comments that came up, very specific, and this went to PRC as well as City Council. And these are the, the comments that came up and we'll show you how we address each one of these. No structured terrace seating. It was debated over and over again and it did, the conclusion was that it ate up a lot of valuable open turf, green space and we can just as well sit on that lawn and put our blankets out there and enjoy a concert or something without putting something structured to eat that space up. Complete the circular path around the seating area. Historically, in a lot of plazas, that, that ability to meander. And whether it be the women meandering and the guys sitting on the benches or vice versa, just the ability to go out for a late evening when it's warm out and just wander and saunter. Provide removable stage portion for the gazebo plaza. That, that circle around the gazebo became more and more important for dance troupes and things that would happen specifically around the gazebo. And so, we worked with the city on creating a space, a portion of that stage that would be removable where the rest of it would be permanent. And we'll show you that in a second. No sto, no shade structures or, or at the stage, the stage or seating areas. And the next one, no columns, nothing to, to obstruct the view of the gazebo and being able to look through the park. And it was discussed that we can bring in temporary shade structures and things like that. If the, a festival or something is happening in the middle of the day and it's going to be really hot out, we can do temporary and then remove it so we don't take away from the beauty of the existing plaza. No play area. It was decided that that was not a feature that was necessary or necessarily wanted for the most part. The fencing on the outside, take it away. A lot of people said it obstructs the ability to freely go in and out of the park, whether it be from a parked car or from across the street. And then one thing that was, was suggested was pavers put into Peck and Union so that it gave the feeling of extending the park into those park area, parking areas that could be closed off during a, a festival with bollards or, you know, things like, we, we have removable bollards. But the ability to extend that plaza, make it larger and make it feel like it's part of the plaza instead of just an asphalt part of the park and a lot of street. So, in that, this is the final concept. As I mentioned, you can see in the, in the gazebo plaza, there's a little wedge in there, number 20, that's removable, so that when that's removed, the, the surfacing underneath that is the same that's around the gazebo, so it maintains that circular, the, the pavers there. The fencing has gone around the outside. You'll notice that the terrace seating has gone, so now we have a wide-open area of grass to be used over there by Main Street as well as on Union with the exclusion or the removal of the, the play area. We, that actually, when we came to this, we did add it some additional accent trees, which has a pink on there. There was a, a great discussion about the existing trees. And we were not removing the existing trees, we're maintaining those and we're adding in some additional trees to, to give some nice accent and, and color. So, with that, financially, this kind of has a breakdown of the cost of the separate items with the total cost at 2.8, 2.9 million. That was, that would be to go in and do the entire plaza with the exclusion of the restroom building, which at this point is grant-funded and, and Nick will probably talk to it. This project is moving forward. So, that is out of the overall cost estimate for the, for the plaza. What I will mention, you'll notice in white there, it says costs include contingencies. That's construction, bidding and a number of those, as well as there's 5% for inflation. So, we're looking at 2020. We, we programmed that in, so during the, you know, the process of this entire plaza, if it goes through design and all or whatever, it may have bumped into 2021. If it was to move forward that quickly, we, we look at 5% a year. And that's already built in for one year for this, this estimate.
Okay, so in, in terms of, of next steps, what, what is markedly different between our master plans versus our strategic plan is that our master plans definitely are tied directly to being able to have funding to make these, these move forward. So, as, as Corbett mentioned and as, as I think I mentioned earlier this evening as well, we, we do have grant funds secured through CDBG to build that permanent restroom at the City Plaza. So, we are currently at the beginning stages of developing construction documents for that restroom, so starting this month in February. We are also awaiting the potential announcement of the Prop 68 Grant Award Program that I had mentioned earlier as well, that we had submitted for the build-out of, of the City Plaza Master Plan. The, the state had originally said that they would have awards out by the end of 2019, but they, they've hit some delays and so they've told us spring of 2020. So, we're, we're waiting for that, for that letter any day to, to find out whether or not we're, we're funded for this project or not. But regardless if we get the grant or not, we are shooting for construction of that permanent restroom in the summer or, or, you know, at the latest fall of, of this year. So, those pieces are definitely moving forward. So, we're at the point where we're considering recommendation of adopting the City Plaza Master Plan. We'd happy, be happy to take any questions you might have.
So, this is a time for the City Council members to ask clarifying and technical questions. Okay, Ari?
I guess procedural technical questions too. We had some correspondence from folks who were reading this publicly and they were confused by, there was a summary of priorities based on past work, like the, the preferred concept and as it changed because we had another public meeting and the City Council gave direct input on all these different parts of it. Could you speak to that really quickly, just so that's on the record?
Sure, so I, I think what you're referring to is that there was a comment from a member of the public regarding, it's on page 61.
George Washington.
Right, and it speaks to the, the bust of George Washington in the City Plaza. And so, if you, if you flip to the page prior, on page 60, you'll see that that whole section is in regards to findings. And these are findings in, in the sense of kind of the overall trends, themes and priorities that emerged throughout the course of our public input meetings. So, so this section of the document really serves to just summarize what we heard from the public. That comment was made at, at at least two or three of the public input meetings that we had from a handful of individuals. So, it's documented in, in the strategic plan, but it's not part of what's recommended in the, the actual master plan. If you take a look at the master plan, you'll see that there's a few separate areas throughout the, the City Plaza footprint that include historic art element pedestals, one of it, one of which is where, or will be the new home of, of the George Washington bust. We're just not exactly sure which location yet, so that's, I mean, so this, this master plan, kind of take a step back, is really meant to be a design. It's kind of a 30% design out of the City Plaza. If and when we get funded for the entire project, then we'll get into kind of real construction documents and really identify exactly where in the plaza George Washington will sit. But again, that mention of George Washington, the removal, the removal of the bust is really just a documentation of what was mentioned at our public input meetings.
Totally understood. And so, following up on that, the historical elements that we talked about in the plaza, the ones that are present, cannons, George Washington, et cetera, none are being eliminated at this time.
None are being eliminated. As part of the, the, the grant application process, we also had to take our master plan through, through the CEQA process or the California Environmental Quality Act process. And the, the main focus of, of the CEQA process for the City Plaza project in particular was on historical preservation, preservation. So, our, our consultants helped us really. So our consultants helped us really identify, you know, the exact elements that are listed in the historic registry for the plaza and ensured that we met all of those requirements, you know, per the state of California to ensure that all of the historical elements of the plaza are preserved according to state guidelines.
A question, the word rebuilt gazebo with permeable paver plaza, does that mean repaired? Because, I mean, I'm just listening to what you just said, which is all about the historical elements of it, so could you clarify that?
Yeah, it essentially means repaired. The gazebo itself has not been seismically safe since the 89 earthquake, and so we've really discouraged individuals from climbing the stairs and getting up onto the actual bandstand. So the work that's being proposed really is to just seismically retrofit the overall gazebo. A lot of the kind of historic, what are they called, they're not gargoyles, but...
Grotesques.
Grotesques, thank you. If you look at them close up, you know, they're missing pieces because things have just kind of eroded over the years. And so part of this project is also to fix all of those things and bring them back to their original beauty.
And could you speak to, it is historical, and I forgot the clarification on what the gazebo was called, but the roof of the gazebo is not...
It's not the original.
It's not the original.
It's the third one.
It's the third one. So that is not covered under the same qualification?
It's not necessarily, because it's not the original roof. The original bandstand, I think, didn't have a roof at all, and then there were a few iterations of it until we got to our most recent roof.
Does that have any impact on monies or the rebuilding or repairing of this particular gazebo?
I think the estimate that's in the budget for the master plan is to include restoration of the existing roof.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, questions? Francisco?
I actually appreciated learning the story behind the George Washington statue, right? Do you mind just sort of letting the public know how it got there? Because I think it's a source of confusion, I think, in the community.
I think I have bits and pieces of it. I might have to defer to Alan for that one, because I think he knows a little bit more than I do on that topic.
My recollections would gift from the Nick Alaga estate when he passed. He donated money to the library, I believe, and to the park for the construction of that pedestal and that bust. An artist was commissioned, they had their studio at that time out on Lee Road, and they created the bust. The bust was placed at a park, there was a ceremony, what, 15 years ago, ballpark, something like that. And there may have been a little bit of additional money donated for the park. I have a vague recollection of some money for the fountain, but that's, that part of my memory is a little foggy, but that's what I remember.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. But I think it does bring up a good point from what we've heard in the community about honoring our diverse and complex history here in the region. Are there, is there funding from the state to be able to add more landmarks or to do something special like that to, I mean, I know there's so many worthy individuals and groups that we can honor, but is there any sort of money for that or anywhere we can access to highlight these things in La Plaza? Because I think La Plaza is just the right place to sort of highlight our history.
There certainly could be greater opportunities to do that. When we applied for the grant for the city plaza through the state, we, I mean, essentially, I think, I think kind of made it through the second round. They came to do a site visit back in November of last year to talk more with us about the project, and then asked us to make some modifications to our original proposal, and they'd actually informed us that they wouldn't fund the street improvements that are shown in the master plan, because they're not technically part of the actual plaza and don't create a, an expanded park space that would be dedicated to being park space 100% of the time. But they did allow us to take the funds that we earmarked for that piece of the project and put them into something else. And so what we proposed is to add additional historical and art elements to the plaza with that same amount of money. So if we do receive funding from the state for this entire project, there's definitely going to be some great opportunities to do more things like that.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
If I could add to what was presented by Alan, there was, at that time, there existed a Latino Chamber of Commerce, and the Latino Chamber of Commerce did come to the city council and received approval to add a headstone. I don't remember of whom, but it would be representative of the Latino population that we have. So there has been approval by city council that it can be added, however, the Latino Chamber of Commerce fell apart for criminal reasons. And that didn't occur. Yeah. Yes?
I have a quick question about that, and this is kind of segueing over to here to We passed measures a few years ago, let the people vote, you know, one of the things is naming public places, et cetera, et cetera. Would this fall under that as well? Because I really want the public to be able to be, you know, not necessarily us making that decision, as Councilman Estrada said, you know, more public input on these things, the better, because we have so many diverse and amazing cultures here in Watsonville, and adding to that, I think, is a really good place for it. But, you know, the diversity among the cultures, it's important that we may not understand, and they may, because of the impact on their history here. Yes?
I have a question. I don't know if I misunderstood Corbin in when you made the presentation. Did you say there was some stepping and elevated area?
In the original design, to afford visibility from people in that lawn area to look at the stage, we had very gently stepping up radiuses.
So is that...
These are the three lines on the outside towards Main. Those were gently terraced seating, but wide enough you could lay down with a blanket or something and have a family out there, and then you could just gently, you could just look over the people's shoulders in front of you, maybe sitting down, and see a better use of this, see a better view of the stage. But it made it pretty far, but near the end of the design process, the public process with the design, it was pretty well voted out that it was obstructing the use of that green space and...
I'm glad to hear that, because I remember in our meeting that we had, we definitely said, no way.
Yeah.
And so, okay, so I'm glad you clarified that. Okay.
Yeah, you can see, yeah.
Ari?
So you're going to come back to us with these historical and the plan on that?
I can, I'll actually chime in on that as well, Councilmember Parker, if I may. So I think what you're asking, if approved tonight and we're successful in achieving the grant, being awarded for the grant, what would be the process for community input on that, on those specific art elements as part of the plaza? I would think, and Nick can chime in on this, but that that would follow our typical public art project approval process, and that could also include some town hall meetings to collect community input on what those elements might be.
And that's great, because we have something, we have the Filipino community, this, you know, Mexicans, Serb, Croatian, Japanese, we have the native peoples, the Spaniard, you know, there's just such a diverse community. It would be a nice thing to have a place where we can wander around and see that.
Any final comments? Public input. This is a time that anybody in the public that would like to address the council on this topic, please come forward.
Thank you for the presentation. My name's Becky Steinbruner, and when the plan first came out, I remember seeing on Nextdoor, a lot of talk and resistance to changing what is the gem of downtown. So I'm glad that it has had good public input and that you're listening to that and reflecting that public input. I like the idea of putting the pavers on Peck and Union. I think that's really nice. It does extend that feel out, and I wonder, would those be permeable to allow for water to go in? You're shaking your head, yes, that's good, thank you. I had hoped to hear a little more about that removable stage and what that was going to look like, and what the permanent stage area would look like, what would be the surface there, what's the approximate area? And that would be nice to have more information about. And also the pavers around the gazebo, will those also likewise let water go in? What will be their material? Would it be an uneven surface that could be perhaps hazardous for toddlers or the elderly? And in constructing and installing those, would it harm the roots of those beautiful trees? I love the trees in that plaza so much that I wouldn't want to damage them at all. In closing, I really want to thank you for doing the retrofit on the gazebo so that it can again be used. That will be marvelous. And that, I love going to the farmer's market. I have also attended, a few years ago, a sort of a ceremony marking the internment of the Japanese Americans. That's where, I understand, they gathered to be taken. And while that is not a happy time in our history at all, it is important not to let people forget that those things do happen and that we must all be vigilant so that they do not happen again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I would like to echo what Becky just said and also add that if we're going to have an upgraded fountain, since we live in the Pajaro Valley, around the edges of the fountain should be native birds, statues of, I have one in my backyard, it works very well, it's just more appropriate because of the fact this is the Pajaro Valley. Cherubs and angels spouting water and things are a little over the top, but birds would be very, very appropriate. And to the other issue, the, I don't know if this would be administered by the Parks and Recreation Department, but I understand the Yamashita grocery, the owner is going to retire next year. Could that be turned into a part of the park service, the city park service as a historical museum for Japanese community? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council? Seeing that, I'll bring it back to the council, and now I'll entertain a motion. Felipe?
Before I make a motion, I want to reiterate some of the stuff about the trees, make sure that we do protect the protected trees, the ones that have plaques, you know, that I'm talking about? And, you know, it might be a good idea and probably not that costly to bring up some sort of history of the plaques that are on like, kind of like reader boards, to illustrate the history of those tree plantings as well, just as a place that people can go visit and read some history about it, right? That said, I'd like to move approval for the city plaza master plan.
Is there a second to that?
I'd like to second it.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, a second, any further discussion?
I'd like to make a comment in regards to the trees. I know we identified a tree that may have to be removed that's at the corner of Main and Beach, is that still true?
Oh, yes. The one that's dying and suffering and...
Yeah, and I just wanted to make sure that we brought that up, because we did just finish stating that we weren't going to remove any trees.
Oh, well...
So I think we need to kind of step back on that statement and say that we, you know, we need to look at the trees and see how healthy the trees are.
Good point. With an arborist report, we would establish that, but that tree specifically in the plaza has seen many, but that and there's also a palm tree that lost its fronds and it's kind of trying to come back, but that the tree you're talking about is in major decline. And I went, an arborist, I used to be an arborist, I'm not practicing now, but with that decline could pose safety issues with branches falling and things like that. So that was one that we looked at from the beginning to come out, and then we've got some additional ones going in. And what's interesting is one of the plaque trees is Japanese maple, and that are very small, but it's in that area right there by Beach, and that would remain in its existing location.
All right. I want to thank you for the outreach, Nick, that you've been doing on this. I know that overall you've done a really good effort. Sometimes our community doesn't come out when we want them, but I think we did a really good effort in reaching out, so I congratulate you on that part, and that's all I have.
Ari had something to say?
Yeah, I want to say thank you very much. I know this has been a hard road to navigate at times, and we up here don't make it any easier for you sometimes in our comments and conversation. But I really wanted to say how much I appreciate it, because Councilwoman Hernandez brought up the trees and taking away some of the hardscape to allow the roots of trees to be able to flourish and creating more soft landscaping around it, and I was, thought that was great. Thank you for being aware of it.
Any final comments? Francisco?
Just kind of connected what we had talked earlier. I really want to see the plaza be an intergenerational space. I want us to bring everyone together, and I'm looking forward to some of these proposed changes, and hopefully, you know, whenever they tell us whether we got funded or not, we move forward with this great project. So just thank you for all the great work.
Okay, with that, I think we're ready for roll call. Estrada?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia? Yes. Motion approved. Okay, so we're on to the final one.
So this will be a little easier, only because when we did present this, we received no real major changes or questions or comments that changed a lot, and it was more clarification. And so what we'll do tonight, we'll do some additional clarification, go through what we presented before and what the outcome has been. Ramsey Park, 26.3 acres, multiple use, great facility, some deferred maintenance areas and issues, but meeting a lot of the needs of a multicultural or multi-age community with the different aspects and activities that take place here. You can kind of see how the findings are grouped. The Family Center was a big source of discussion, both internally and externally, as well as the use of the basketball court next to it, which we'll talk a little bit about. The natural turf soccer field, as steep as it is and the water problems it has during spring and late fall play and into the winter when it rains. Looking at the baseball field that exists now and some drainage issues, which happen certain times of the year, and they're not that bad, but they do exist, and then looking at some options in that space. Looking throughout the entire park trail system and areas that are not ADAC accessible, and we can talk a little bit about, Nick will mention the path system we're working on right now. And then the play equipment furnishings are old, need updating, we're replacing to be code compliant. And then the visibility of the knoll is kind of high up and not necessarily visibly, visible from different locations, but if we group the activities, it'll work well within that space. So looking at the overall final concept, the soccer pitch would remain at this point natural turf. Just to help you out to, oh, great, you've got the, yeah. So this line, this dashed line, people always wonder, what is that? That's a 100-year floodplain, and that'll come into play at the last few slides. We looked at that because one of the original thoughts was that the soccer pitches would be synthetic turf to increase the amount of play and decrease the amount of problems that are happening right now in the goal, the mouths of the goal zones and things like that. And with that much of the pitch in the 100-year floodplain, it was decided that we would maintain that in natural turf, not synthetic turf, but it increased pathways around the outside seating and areas. And then we've got the baseball field, and we'll break this down in areas. So looking a little bit closer, the first would be the Family Center area, the light purple is the existing building, which has been under renovation and looking pretty nice inside, looking good. And there's some accessibility things that are being taken care of, will be taken care of this summer, getting in the main entry. But looking at the darker purple, and here's the orange, looking at everyone, a lot of people are asking for an interior inside gym where we could have a basketball court that would be, you know, full court, really nicely done with their number four, the red on top, would be the bleachers that pull out from the walls, green being stor- on top, would be the bleachers that pull out from the walls, green being storage, and then the magenta down the far left-hand corner, lower left-hand corner being restroom buildings. So an extension of the existing building architecturally, but creating some mixed-use area in there. As I mentioned, the soccer field would be natural turf. The northern edge on Main Street is maintaining the existing screen line that's there now and we're just moving in towards the slope a bit to get the full pitches and the width in there. The multipurpose field, this was looked at as extending it to increase the use of it to include soccer, and this would be, this is programmed right now to be synthetic turf to, because it's lit, and to maximize the use of the space throughout the year. Really grouping a lot of the family activities on the knoll, but working with the pathways to make them more ADA accessible, starting out with the brown area on the top of the knoll with the dog park with two-sized dogs, dog areas, small dogs and big dogs, more structured, larger play areas for the kids versus the small ones that exist now with the different play areas. Picnic areas throughout, picnic areas on the slope towards the basketball pitch, the basketball area, basketball, I'm sorry, the soccer areas so we can get some family picnicking as well as some viewing of soccer. Looking at the existing skate park area, putting a pump track in, and actually, we are getting some interface with the group that was mentioned earlier with that pump track, and that's underway right now, right? I mean, the design, so that's a great feature. And then looking, I'll go back here, looking at the Nature Center down, you can see an outdoor basketball court's taking its place, and we're looking at the possibility in the future of moving the Nature Center up out of the hundred-year floodplain and then with a more permanent structure and a decking, a deck area around the outside for viewing of the slews and outside landscaping. Going in there with a nice little amphitheater for outdoor classrooms and a picnic area as well, so you can kind of see a little close-up there. This does show number 18, it's an, it's a, an outdoor viewing area going into the slough. The only problem with that specific location is it's really not making much visible because of the existing plant material, so it's been moved up to the north to a really good area with a great view. In fact, it's primarily in this area right here between some of the larger trees, so it's going to be a fun feature for viewing the slews. So that's the final concept in total, again, and then a breakdown of the areas. And again, these areas through the public feedback and input were kind of designated out as well as specific things asked for, dog park, putting in pump tracks, taking out the skate, these different items adding up to 21.24, $21.2 million, and this again includes the contingencies.
Okay, so we obviously don't have $21 million in the bank to build out this entire plan, but what's nice about having this plan is that it's kind of pieced out into smaller chunks, right? Like we have set pricing for each feature so that we can kind of take things in phases as we go and look for opportunities to make these all move forward. So what's listed here are three things that we are planning, or three components of this overall master plan that we are definitely planning on moving forward down the line and that we've secured funding for already. So the first is to begin construction of the Watsonville-Slew Connector Project. So this, I think again, is funded by an urban greening grant that we received from the state of California last year for $1.3 million. And what this project looks at is really kind of accessibility across the entire park, and it also helps to work towards our carbon sequestration goals as the city organization as well. So one of the challenges with the way that Ramsey Park is currently laid out is that it's really difficult to traverse from the Main Street side of the park back to Harkins Slough without having to walk through parking lots and spaces that aren't really intended for pedestrians. So this project helps us build out not only sidewalks, but also trail access through the park. So the main thoroughfare that's being added through this grant is kind of the start of this red line here, which is the entrance of the park on Main Street. It adds sidewalks from the Main Street side across in front of the Family Center, and it kind of cuts across this way towards Target. And then we'll add a trail all the way through the backside of the park here, kind of underneath the retaining wall on the Target side of the park. There's also some additional trail improvements throughout kind of the middle of the park here, and a large number of rain gardens and whatnot that will be added throughout the park as well. So we're actually working with Verdi right now on developing construction documents for all of that work, and our construction documents will come to the council before we go out to bid sometime in April, May of this year, if we are able to stay on track with that. So that will come back to you again very shortly. Construction for this project is slated to begin sometime towards the end of this year, and again, this project is fully funded. The other piece that we have identified funds for is the construction of our bicycle pump track. So I think as most of you have heard, we've been working very closely with Mountain Bikers of Santa Cruz, and through their work, we've identified an anonymous donor who's agreed to pay for the entire construction of the park, which is super, super exciting. So we are currently working on developing construction documents for the track and our agreement with mountain bikers as well, and we're working towards a timeline of construction start for that project in the fall of 2020, so at the end of this year. The third piece of this plan that we are hoping to move forward with pending adoption of the plan tonight is the design and construction of our dog park that is also identified in the plan at the top of the hill. And the way that we're hoping to finance the construction of that piece of the plan is through the per capita grant program through Proposition 68. So through Prop 68, every Parks and Recreation Agency throughout the state of California is going to receive a set amount of money for park projects, and that amount of money that each jurisdiction receives is based on their population size. So we're estimating currently the Watsonville is going to receive about $200,000 for a project or a park-related project within our community, and we're going to be proposing to the council that we use that money for the construction of the dog park with park development fees used to supplement the rest of that project. The grant funds or the grant application for Prop 68, further per capita funds is anticipated to be out any day now, and so we're just kind of waiting on the state to release that program. But again, those funds are guaranteed to every jurisdiction in California, and so you have to apply for it, but I mean, as you apply, you really just identify which projects you plan to use the money for and you're granted the funds. So that's where we're headed. That wraps up our presentation on Ramsey Park, and we're happy to take any questions.
So now's the time for council members to ask clarifying or technical questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Clarifying question on the per capita grant that we get, what's the total, do you know estimated amount?
The total across the state or for...
But we...
We would receive about $200,000.
$200,000? And we're going to be putting that to dog parks?
That's what we're, at this point, I think going to be recommending, you know, looking at all of the different things on the list and the price tags associated with them, it's probably the most realistic project to kind of knock off. The basketball court obviously is a lower price tag, but that basketball court is earmarked for the space that the Nature Center sits today, and so that would require the Nature Center to move and build it and, you know...
My question would be on this, on the per capita grant, is that just going to be for the Ramsey Park or is it for our parks in general, we can use that funding?
It could really be used for any project anywhere in our system, but it really needs to be for a new element that's developed within a park space. So it can't be used for, say, deferred maintenance or, you know, fixing existing equipment, it needs to be for a new park facility.
Okay. Next question, the baseball field and the usage of the baseball field, are we going to try to work with the school district on the allowability for them to be scheduling Paharo Valley High School, use it as their home field?
Yeah, I anticipate that we definitely would. Paharo Valley High School currently uses the field at Ramsey Park for games and for practices, and I think we would anticipate that we would continue to foster that relationship with the district.
So I guess the next step for our artificial turf fields is to try to hopefully find a donor?
That's correct. Or grants or some other means of funding.
If somebody's out there that knows how to help us out and hopefully they can help us out.
That would be great.
And creating some of this park, thank you.
Other questions for clarification or technical questions? Ari and then Francisco.
Just a quick one on the urban greening grant. That was a year ago, right? What was the total amount on that?
$1.3 million.
Okay. And that was specifically for what it's being used for?
Correct.
Okay.
Nick, my question is, you know, Becky and Steve talked about the generosity of members of the community. Have we engaged the individual that's leasing Soccer Central to maybe help out with something? I feel like the community has been so supportive of Soccer Central, and is there any way that we can work collaboratively to address something here?
I think that's a great suggestion. We haven't yet, you know, beyond the projects that we've identified, we haven't really been proactive as of yet to, you know, go out to the community to make asks, to develop out some of these projects that are included in the master plan. But that's really, I think, one of the driving forces behind developing these master plans in the first place is that, you know, once we identify what our needs are and what the costs are, that gives us a way better opportunity to go out to the community and have a direct ask and say, you know, here's what we heard from the community and here's what we need and here's how much it costs. So I think your suggestion is definitely well-taken.
Because, I mean, Soccer Central is on public land.
Correct.
Right, and so we're sort of subsidizing something for Soccer Central.
They pay, through their lease agreement with the city, they pay a set amount to the city every year. So it's, they don't get space for free necessarily, and I'm not sure how to answer whether or not we subsidize that space or not based on how much they pay and the value of the land and that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, I have a couple. First, there's going to be an expansion of the Family Center. What types of programs are you planning to have at that center?
So the, what was prioritized through our community engagement process is the addition of an indoor gymnasium. So in that gymnasium, I mean, we could really have a number of activities. It's really intended to be, to be set up, you know, like a basketball court that could also be used as a volleyball court and for badminton and pickleball and all kinds of other court-type sports. I mean, I imagine it could also be used for things like youth dances or senior balls and that sort of thing as well. It also gives us the opportunity to take a look at the existing spaces within Ramsey Park, and, you know, as we kind of shift activity into the gymnasium, you know, it gives us an opportunity to take a look at how we're using those other spaces and, you know, whether or not they could be used or repurposed for other things like for dance and so on and so forth.
Well, in terms of the dance, is it possible that the community could rent that building for any kind of, like a quinceañera or a wedding or a shower or something?
I definitely imagine so, once we get there. I mean, Ramsey Park Family Center is currently available for rent for quinceañeras and weddings and whatnot. With the expanded space, we could definitely look to see how we make that happen without damaging the court surface.
Okay. My second question is, I missed, you're moving the Nature Center, but I didn't see to where it was being moved to.
So now, see the basketball court, that's now outdoor, that's where it exists now. If you look really closely underneath it, there is a shadow of the portable, so it's being, it's a purple building being moved up, there you go, above the hundred-year floodplain. There's a slope up there, there's a, that's where the existing play area is in the slide, so it's basically taking that place. And then the slide, which is historical and very well-loved, that is being moved to the new play area, but then that area will be designated for that Nature Center.
So it sits here and it's going to be moved this way?
Up the hill, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And that just affords, you know, really good visibility of the slews and outdoor classes and...
Okay, very, very good. Oh, have us walk a little bit further.
Oh, yeah.
To the trail.
Well, and we are looking, we've already looked at all the grades in there, and it could very easily, with a little bit of work, be made ADA compliant to get up there, so yes, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And any, yes, Verdi?
Yeah, Mayor, I have one more question. The car wash, I call it the car wash lot, are we going to retain that? Because I've seen the parking moved around, at least in the picture it showed that parking was going to be a little different at the entrance, but I guess it'll stay the same on this one.
Okay, so when you look at that, you'll notice where's the big island that the car wash is right up adjacent to. That's been removed to increase the number of stalls, but the car wash will remain. We will probably relocate it to an area that's a little more appropriate, and there's a drain in there now to Santeras, so we'll move that as well, and then create a nice, large area, again, once again, for that car wash, but that is not going away. It's too important.
Yeah, good.
If there's no more questions, then it's time for roll call. Oh, no, public input. I forgot, I almost forgot, I almost forgot. I forgot, I forgot, we don't even have a motion. I was just looking at the time, I'm getting tired.
I'll be quick. These are all wonderful plans, but I am told by city employees that Ramsey Park has the biggest problem with vandalism and graffiti of any city-owned space in the city. Now, that, it takes a long time to get from one end to the other. Are we going to put police on segways, on horseback, on scooters, or what, or bicycles? Because, folks, there are problems out there, and especially in the dark. I wouldn't walk through there in the dark, it's one of the few places in the city I really, because of my very advanced age, would not be brand venture out into pitch dark. Not only that, I've only got one eye, only one eye works for many years. So how are we going to deal with police protection and help them get around the park if they're at one end of the park and there's a situation at the other end of the park? Because as you've pointed out, it's kind of hard to work your way through, some areas are hard because they're not really made for pedestrians. And then, of course, the idea of having, and, well, maybe not an auditorium, but an enclosed basketball structure that could be used for dances. When has Watsonville ever thrown a dance? I mean, is that, how far back do we have to go in historical books to find when Watsonville offered a dance? Probably the Victorian era, I hope, or some, maybe that far back. I'm hoping that that would become a positive possibility of event, because I know the GLBT community would love to have such a Valentine's Day dance in an enclosed structure owned by the city that could attract people from far and wide. So I'm hoping that this will all be taken into consideration and that the, all the wonderful things you have planned are going to pan out and we'll find the money. And of course, you know, you can always pass the hat at city council meetings or other city events and have a lockbox or persons collecting checks and donations to help do this, because this will cost a lot of money, but we all know it's tremendously worth it and we'll pay dividends down the road. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Becky Steinbrenner. I've gone there to that park with my kids a lot of times, and we appreciated the Nature Center a lot, so I'm glad it's going to be saved, and I'm really delighted to see the viewpoint there. The slews are a wonderful thing. I wondered, because it has been a few years, I don't remember there being really good bathrooms there. Is that going to be addressed with, especially if it's such a high-use area for outdoor activity? And I really want to speak up again about the health effects of artificial turf. There are problems with them, even though they save water and you don't have to mow them, there are many studies coming out about the health hazards of them because you can't keep them clean, and they are very hot. If you ever go down to Depot Park in Santa Cruz, it's almost like an oven radiating off that, and the kids who play there are very uncomfortable because it is so hot. And the kids who play there are very uncomfortable because it is so hot. So I want to encourage the use of good old grass there instead of artificial turf. And I just have a question. There was something mentioned about Paharo Valley High School using their baseball there. Aren't they doing a whole new athletic field? Is that only for football? My understanding, it is only football? That's a shame. Okay, well, at least they'll have football. Thank you very much for your report.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else like to address the council? I will bring it back to a council and we'll entertain a motion. Felipe?
I'd like to move approval for Ramsey Park master plan.
There is second?
Second.
Second by Francisco. Any further discussion?
Let's keep an eye on all those state grant opportunities. I think a portion of it is still in that one, isn't a portion of it still in that one census tract, one of our three census tracts that we could possibly get funding for it? The south end tip, maybe?
Are you speaking specifically about Ramsey Park?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's a number of different programs through Prop 68 and they all have kind of different parameters or qualifiers for grant programs. The big pot of money through Prop 68 looks specifically at the half-mile radius around park spaces and looks at park density and kind of income levels or disadvantaged communities. That's the grant that Ramsey actually doesn't qualify for because of its size and because it's sandwiched between kind of a disadvantaged community and kind of, you know, a more well-to-do community. And is a grant opportunity that we applied for the plaza for. But there definitely are other opportunities through Prop 68 for Ramsey.
No?
Well, it goes without question that we need all these things. We just don't have, and we're a disadvantaged community and we don't have the resources for them all. So we need to prioritize and we need to shake the bushes and find ways that we can improve our Ramsey Park and every other park in the city as well. And try and find some way to acquire more park space.
Francisco?
Nick, just a quick question. Was there ever a consideration for putting like solar panels on like the parking lot to maybe help with, you know, energy and stuff like that?
I think that came up maybe a couple times throughout the process. If I recall correctly, that is definitely something that we can continue to look at. It didn't come up so strongly that it's in the master plan. And I mean, if there's programs that make sense to install those where the payoff is worthwhile, I mean, we definitely look at that opportunity.
I want to address the question that has come before us in terms of artificial turf and its possible harmful impact. Can you address that, please?
Many, many, there were many reports early on and they really focused around two things. They focused around the rubber infill, which was the recycled tires. And to a lesser extent, the different materials that were used back in the mid-2000s, the 2010s of the actual nylons and things used for the blades of the turf itself. I'll try to make this short. There was a coach that went to the hospital to, in Seattle, you've probably heard the stories, to visit one of her players that was in the hospital and she had cancer. And what was interesting was a nurse found out why she was visiting, who she was visiting, and said, my gosh, you know, we've had a number of young soccer players here who have, basically have the same problems and it's, I'm just wondering if there's a correlation. Well, that spurred on independent studies throughout the country, most of them based back in New York, where a lot of this was generated. And literally, and these were independent, every report independently came back and said that was not the cause of the problem. Now, there are dirtier infills than others and the ones in the West Coast, it's all cryogenic, it's very clean, you know, recycled rubber and everything else. When it came to MRSA and other things that were found in sports and sports players and athletes, they found that the cause of those were from the locker rooms, not the fields. Yes, people throw up. Yes, there's blood. Whenever we designed something like this, there's always a system for cleaning that. We don't specify the rubber resilient surface, the rubber surface infill anymore purely because cities don't want the phone calls. Because then they have to produce the reports and people don't believe the reports. So you said, let's just, we're not even, we don't even specify anymore. We're going with organic, we're going with primarily cork. There's other materials out there, but cork is the, primarily the most organic and some of the least maintenance-dependent surfaces. It's cooler. So it does drop and admittedly, yes, you go on a field where it's got the black rubber and it's pretty darn warm out there. I mean, you could be anywhere from 10 to 15 degrees hotter just walking onto that field. So the cork is a lot cooler. The interesting thing about the color green, it is a heat conductor because, and this is not natural grass, but the color green attracts warmth for photosynthesis. This is alive, but it's just the nature of the color. So it's not just the infill. The grass itself does attract some of the heat as well. This has come a long way. And so the systems that are out now and people backing off away from the rubber surface infill has really changed the way things are done out there. And all the fields now are typically, they're all built, if they're done correctly, with a shock pad and everything else as far as concussions and things go. So a lot of research has gone to this. And there has been a real evolution in fields from the 1999 into 2000, when it kind of start really getting going in the West Coast. A lot of changes have happened and the turf companies that were not following suit didn't get the work. So now they're following suit and they're coming out with their own cork systems or whatever it is to make sure they can compete and do organic. Everything's recyclable as well as safety for the public because even though the reports came out and said, oh, no, it's all fine, the companies who produce this stuff as well as the specifiers, we don't want the phone calls. We want cities to be able to use this and school districts to use this, you know, worry-free. So all those older systems, and they're being replaced. A lot of those are now, they're eight-year, they're 10-year life cycle and they're being replaced and they're being replaced with a cork infill and different turf blends.
I'm so pleased to hear that.
Oh, I am too.
Thank you.
One last question from you, Mayor. Just in terms of safety, is there any studies that show that maybe athletes tear their like ACLs more on turf field and on natural grass or is there no sort of?
There's two things. The infills actually are, I'll get to that, I'll just do a statement, I'll tell you why. They're safer than natural turf fields can be and you need to wear the right type of cleats. You need to wear cleats that are designed for synthetic turf fields. If you wear a typical football cleat for a dirt field or a soil-based field that is longer, you will grip harder and you can have a problem. But that's not the way you buy the specific cleats for synthetic turf. People love natural turf and they say it's safer. Well, what happens when maintenance isn't kept up? The moisture level's not kept up? It gets drier, it gets more compacted, it gets harder than a rock. And these are all based on GMAX and the manufacturers got to come out and they test for GMAX, which is the concussion and the dropping of the weight and ball and all those things. And they do that on natural turf fields that have not maintained or not maintained. If it has not been maintained and the moisture level drops to a certain level and it gets harder, it's a lot, and for as far as ankles go and concussions, the risk rate goes up.
Are cities sort of required to put any like warning signs with turf fields, like, you know, this could happen if you wear the wrong cleat, you could tear your ACL more likely or concussion or anything like that?
No.
No? Okay.
Like a skate park, you have to wear the apparatus and they'll say skate at your own risk. We suggest you wear these. On synthetic turf fields, no. There are rule signs, but it's, a lot of it's more about the maintenance aspects of the turf.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, now I think it's time for a roll call.
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Fernandez?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Garcia? Yes. Motion carries. Congratulations on all three. Moving on, there are no emergency items added. Requests and scheduling future agenda items. Felipe and then Ari.
Two things. I had sent an email about the, about a community request to do a formal apology for the anti-Filipino riots. And some of the folks in the community had suggested March 24th, if that is a council meeting, March 10th or March 24th. Preferably the 24th because I think it falls in line with exhibit at the library as well. But if we can somehow put that on there. And also, it was mentioned earlier about the state's equity programs. If it's possible to have a discussion about what has gone on since the last time we did the equity thing and to see if there's any updates that we could, that we could get updated on and make sure that we follow everything that the state's doing in terms of equity for the cannabis programs. So that local people can take advantage of, you know, whatever the state's doing on equity and of the cannabis industry.
Ari? You know, mine's actually on that. So I would like to request that, he referred to it, Allen did, Chapter 49, is that our local, of our ordinance? That's going to be addressed and that'll be brought to us with the cannabis issue as well. And any updates on that, that would be great because equity was a huge thing that we had discussed previous to this as an important part of our local partners.
Okay, I have two. In December, I requested that we have a resolution on health and all policy. I'd like that because it was requested quite a while ago that for our February 28th, that that resolution come forth. And then, you're saying no, but that's what I'm requesting. Okay? And then I am requesting also an agenda item to address getting, sending out a letter to those owners of parcels that would be impacted by a drive-through ordinance. Okay, hearing no other requests, then I will adjourn this meeting.
Before 10 o'clock.